All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Successor Agency to Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting. It is April 25th. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We will now start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And tonight, we are honored to have Kyle Penison and Dylan Williams, who will lead us off in the pledge. So everyone, will you please stand for the pledge?
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Okay, thank you both so much. We're going to see you in just a moment. We have one more item. We have item three, changes to the order of the agenda. Justice staff have any changes this evening?
Nothing from staff this evening, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any changes from my colleagues this evening? Okay, seeing that, we'll move on to item four, presentation. I am thrilled to present tonight's proclamation to Kyle Penison and Dylan Williams with Boy Scout Troop 321 upon receiving their Eagle Scout award. So I'm going to start with Kyle. And I'm going to read, Kyle, I'm going to read your proclamation. And then we'll hear from you about your project. And then we'll move on to Dylan. So I hope that sounds okay. So we are commending Kyle Penison. Whereas the Boy Scouts of America is an organization of youth preparing themselves to be future citizens and leaders. And whereas the Boy Scouts is committed to fostering the traits of leadership and strength of character among its members. And whereas the Boy Scouts play a vital force in the lives of hundreds of youth in the city of San Carlos, who are guided by adult volunteers who have given generously of their time and talent. And whereas for his service project, the final requirement for the rank of Eagle Scout, Kyle Penison utilized his leadership skills to organize and inspire his team while planning and managing the project to completion. And whereas the special and unique honor of achieving the highest award bestowed by the Boy Scouts was earned by Kyle Penison of Troop 321 for building and installing two little free library book sharing boxes in San Carlos. And whereas Kyle Penison's project provides a great benefit to the San Carlos community by inspiring readers and expanding book access for all. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Sarah McDowell, Mayor of the city of San Carlos, hereby congratulate Kyle Penison on the attainment of the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout and commend him for his service and accomplishments as a member of the Boy Scouts of America dated this 25th day of April 2022. So Kyle, welcome. Would you like to tell us a little bit about your project?
Sure. So I teamed up with the San Carlos Women's Club to deliver two little libraries across our city. And I hoped that it would inspire younger kids to start working. So, or not start working, start reading, sorry. So I started work by modeling the library in Fusion 360, which is a computer design software. And then I led my family, some scouts, to build, assemble, and deliver it to the people we had selected, who had offered to host the library in their front yard. So this one that you see in the picture is on Britton Avenue, right across the street from like the baseball field. And then the second one is on Laurel Street in front of First Life Counseling.
Thank you, Kyle. Thanks so much for your contributions. I'm sure the little libraries are very well used. Do any of my colleagues have any comments or questions for Kyle before we move on to Dylan? Okay, seeing that, we'll move on to Dylan Williams. And Dylan, I'm going to read your proclamation as well. So this is commending Dylan Williams upon achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. Whereas the Boy Scouts of America is an organization of youth preparing themselves to be future citizens and leaders. And whereas the Boy Scouts is committed to fostering the traits of leadership and strength of character among its members. And whereas the Boy Scouts play a vital force in the lives of hundreds of youth in the city of San Carlos, who are guided by adult volunteers who have given generously of their time and talent. And whereas for his service project, the final requirement for the rank of Eagle Scout, Dylan Williams utilized his leadership skills to organize and inspire his team while planning and managing the project to completion. And whereas the special and unique honor of achieving the highest award bestowed by the Boy Scouts was earned by Dylan Williams of Troop 321 for building two outdoor wooden sink frames for Trinity Preschool in San Carlos. And whereas Dylan Williams' project provides a great benefit to Trinity Preschool as it provides an opportunity for their students to practice good hand hygiene while playing outdoors. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Sarah McDowell, Mayor of the city of San Carlos, hereby congratulate Dylan Williams on the attainment of the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout and commend him for his service and accomplishments as a member of the Boy Scouts of America dated this 25th day of April 2022. So well done, Dylan. Would you like to tell us a little bit about your project?
Sure. So my project was to build two new outdoor wooden sinks for Trinity Preschool. My job was to build the frames for these projects. And Trinity would assemble all the sink compartments. The idea for the project was to last multiple years and originally came into plan during the COVID-19 pandemic in the summer of 2021. The impact it will have is it will allow the kids to be able to wash their hands outside, practice good hygiene, and practice good social distancing, and encouraging kids to be outside as much as possible. On the day of the project, I led the scouts on a mission and we assembled all the tables, glued, sanded, painted, screwed, and drilled. The project took one Sunday afternoon after all the preparations happened. Even though the project was chaotic, I was able to get it completed in one sitting. In the end, my project is greatly serving Trinity Preschool. And I'd like to thanks James Trainer and Trinity Preschool for their flexibility about timing and all the help.
That's fantastic. That sounds like a wonderful contribution to the Trinity Preschool, Dylan, and thank you. Are there any comments from my colleagues? I see Councilmember Dugan, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and congratulations Kyle and Dylan. A lot of hard work. I appreciate learning about these two projects. But I know an awful lot goes into becoming an Eagle Scout besides two capstone projects. So congratulations for your years of dedication and your service to San Carlos. And we really appreciate hearing about what you've accomplished here. Thank you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor Rack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I apologize for being late. I didn't catch all the projects. But I just want to offer my congratulations also to Kyle and to Dylan for their work as a fellow Eagle Scout. Congratulations and keep up the good work. And I hope you remain engaged with the community as you have been in the past. So congratulations.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also want to offer my congratulations. As someone who only made it to Star Scout and was five merit badges short of Eagle Scout, I know the work that's involved. And you have my respect and my admiration. It's truly a great goal to achieve. And I really value my time in Scouts. I learned a lot about myself and life and the society and community around me. And so I think it's a wonderful achievement. And congratulations to you both and good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Councilmember Palmer Lohan.
And I also want to just thank them, Dylan and Kyle, for your service. I really appreciate the fact that your project focuses on bettering the lives of others. Thank you for your service.
Okay, well, congratulations all around in the entire City Council. And thank you so much for being of such great service for the community. And best of luck to you both going forward. Thank you, Kyle and Dylan. Okay, so we will now move on to our next item. Item five, Council Communications and Announcements. These are brief items from members of the City Council regarding upcoming events in the community and correspondence that they have received. We'll do item A, Councilmember Report on Subcommittee, Regional Board, Commissions, and Committees. Do any of my colleagues have anything to share this evening? Okay. Seeing then, we will move on to five C. Report on Commencement of City of San Carlos Code of Conduct and Ethics Policy Investigation. And I am going to share with you. Under the city's code of conduct and ethics policy, when a city official is informed of a potential code of conduct violation, they are required to report it to the mayor. This is precisely what occurred in this situation. After reviewing an email from the city treasurer to city staff, a preliminary determination has been made that violations of the city's code of conduct and ethics policy may have occurred. As required per the code of conduct, the official has been informed. Our next step is to inform the public of this alleged violation and share all known relevant documentation immediately. City staff issued an amended City Council agenda on Friday morning in order to include this item in tonight's regularly scheduled City Council meeting. It is the intent of the City Council and city staff to quickly and openly share all information related to this investigation. After tonight's meeting, the City Council will continue to collect all relevant facts and will hold a public hearing to make a determination of whether a violation of the city's code of conduct has occurred. If, after the public hearing, the City Council determines that a violation occurred, the next step would be to impose sanctions as outlined under section 15 of the code of conduct. This may include formal censure or other potential actions. This investigation will continue with the assistance of the city attorney and his firm. I will now open it up to any council questions or comments. Okay, seeing then, Crystal, I believe I have to take public comments on this item. Is there any public comment?
Yes, I do see a hand up. Let me go ahead and display the our timer here. Mark Albert, if you can go ahead and unmute.
Can you hear, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor McDowell, for providing me with this time to address the council. I recently had an interaction with the city treasurer, which may bear on your code of conduct and ethics policy investigation. I am not sure that it does, but the facts appear somewhat similar to at least part of the current investigation, as I understand it. I recently set up a community event focused on what it's like to run for office and serve as an elected official. I rented a room in the Adult Community Center to host the event. You can imagine my surprise when I got a phone call from the city treasurer asking who had authorized my use and whether I had paid anything for it. The tone of the inquiry made me think of what it must be like to be hauled in front of the district attorney or a grand jury to answer questions. It definitely came across as an official inquiry by an elected city official. I didn't return the call because I knew enough to know the treasurer was both out of line and asking such questions officially, and that in any event, the questions were beyond the scope of her duties. But a regular resident who had not served in a public capacity might not appreciate that. If any of you have questions on my experience as you move forward with your investigation, I would be happy to meet with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Crystal, are there any other people wishing to make public comments on this item?
No, there are no hands.
Okay. Okay, now we will move on to item six, Public Comments. Persons wishing to address the City Council on matters not on the posted agenda may do so at this time. Please know that each speaker is limited to two minutes. If the item you are speaking on is not listed on the agenda, please be advised that the City Council may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed under the Brown Act. The City Council's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future City Council agenda. Crystal, is anyone waiting in the waiting room for public comment this evening?
Yes, we do have two hands. First up is Lauren McCombs. You can go ahead and unmute.
Good evening, San Carlos City Council and all who are present. My name is Lauren Patton-McCombs, and I have lived in San Mateo County for the past 35 years. And for the past 32 years, I have been fortunate to live in San Carlos. I'm a deacon in the Episcopal Church and an active member of Peninsula Interfaith Cohort, a group of 45 clergy, and also a faith-in-action community leader. Through these groups, I've been actively involved with the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors on many issues, including stopping the illegal transfer of inmates from our county jails. In early November last year, we were successful in stopping the ICE transfers by the sheriff. This evening, I stand before you as a volunteer with Fixing San Mateo County, working to bring even more transparency to our sheriff's office. In San Mateo County, our Black and Latino neighbors are being arrested at a much higher rate than our white neighbors. I come before you this evening to ask our elected San Carlos City Council to create a community-based oversight board that can work with the sheriff's office in order to make recommendations about policies and training. Fixing San Mateo's goal is to set up a sheriff's oversight board and an inspector general to oversee the sheriff's office. As we're all too aware, if there isn't any oversight, then there isn't any transparency. And without transparency, there is not accountability. Checks and balances are necessary and accountability as well as transparency. And I am coming today to ask you to formally endorse the work of Fixing San Mateo County and allow us to list the San Carlos City Council as a supporter of civilian oversight. And also to call upon the board of our county board of supervisors to ask them to adopt an ordinance to enact effective, independent civilian oversight into law. Thank you so much for your serving our city and also listening.
Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you, Lauren. Next up is Mark Albert. If you can go ahead and unmute, there you go.
I think I got it right this time. Thank you, Crystal. Good evening, Mayor McDowell. Thank you again for giving me time to address the council. I was surprised and saddened to learn that Clock Tower Music's plate glass window on Laurel Street was destroyed recently. It upset me to learn it was purportedly caused by a highly intoxicated patron from the Orchid Room when he or she was leaving the bar. But what disturbed me most of all is that similar actions, although of less individual severity, are apparently quite common. This is not consistent with our being the city of good living. While compensation for damages can be pursued by Clock Tower, I believe the council needs to look into what can be done to minimize these occurrences in the first place. Being granted a license to conduct business in San Carlos or in any community is a privilege, not a right. Granted, revoking such rights is difficult. But that can be done, provided the right regulatory framework is in place to do so. More importantly, the right framework will motivate owners of riskier businesses like bars to take steps themselves to reduce risk. That would be a win for every kind of business, and perhaps even for patrons prone to drunken conduct. Please, take the time to look into this and take whatever steps you reasonably can to protect our downtown. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you. And there are no further hands.
Okay, thank you, Crystal. We will now move on to item seven, Consent Calendar. Do any of my colleagues wish to pull an item from the consent calendar this evening? Seeing that, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
Crystal, could you please call the ball?
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes, and I would just like to add my thanks to Steve Machina and Public Works Department for finally getting this hawk signal at Bellwood Avenue and El Camino on the work list. Did I say?
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell?
Yes. Thanks, Crystal. Okay, item eight, Reports to Council. We will now receive an annual update on police services from our police captain and San Carlos chief, Christina Bell. Crystal, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Hello, everyone.
Hello, everyone. Give me one second. And Crystal, do I have control?
Yes, I will grant you control. Okay, you should proceed.
Okay, just trying to find the button. Okay, got it. All right, good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, city staff, and city manager. I am Captain Christina Bell, your Chief of Police for the City of San Carlos. This presentation will provide a high-level update on police services for 2021. As you can see in this chart, this organizational chart, this outlines what I am responsible for within the City of San Carlos, including personnel, and also not limited to the PERC team, our motor unit for the entire county with the sheriff's office, and also the human trafficking program. As a side note, I also serve as a commissioner on the Behavioral Health Commission with the county. Part one crimes. Things have changed a little in 2021. Prior to January first, 2021, law enforcement agencies would submit information on the number of part one crimes to the FBI monthly. This was known as the Uniform Crime Reporting System, or PROGRAM, UCR. The UCR program collected data to measure the level and scope of crime occurring throughout the nation. Part one crimes were the universal standard upon which crime is measured in the United States. Part one crimes are listed on this slide. These crimes were chosen to be part one crimes because they are serious crimes occurring with regularity nationwide and determined likely to be reported to law enforcement. The UCR program was retired, and the FBI transitioned to the National Incident-Based Reporting System, also known as NIBRs, on January first, 2021. NIBRs was implemented to improve the quality of crime data collected by law enforcement. Local, state, and federal agencies are all moving towards this incident-based reporting as opposed to the summary reporting system utilized previously with the UCR program. The sheriff's office transitioned to NIBRs on September first, 2021. The UCR program was based on a hierarchy, meaning that the most significant crime or offense was only reported for that incident, even though other crimes and offenses could have been present. Now, all crimes are reported to the Department of Justice and FBI. The main purpose behind this change is to give agencies a more robust and detailed data on crime trends. This allows for more information and more informed decisions about operational and investigative resources. Taking a look at part one crimes. Overall, we're still decreasing, but it's averaged about the same. However, I am happy to report that we have decreased part one crimes by forty-five reports. After analyzing the data, we saw the biggest decrease in larceny from five hundred and thirteen to four hundred and forty-two reports. That's a decrease in seventy-one. As a reminder, larceny is the unlawful taking away property from the possession of another. Some examples include shoplifting, thefts of bicycles, thefts of motor vehicle parts, check fraud, forgery, and auto burglaries. Vehicle burglaries, or auto burgs, are counted as larceny, but as a reference, we had eighty-nine in 2020 and just sixty-one in 2021. Violent crimes. These crimes include murder, robbery, sexual assault or rape, and aggravated assaults. This is an unlawful attack by one person upon another for the purpose of inflicting severe or aggravated bodily injury. This type of assault is accompanied by the use of a weapon or by a means likely to produce death or great bodily harm. Simple assaults are excluded from this category. We had a decrease in violent crime by three reports, but we had seven less sexual assaults, five more robberies, and two more aggravated assaults. Something to note. We also decreased in simple assaults. We had sixty-nine in 2020, and we went to fifty-seven in 2021. Now, I remember last year when I reported out, one of the question was, how many was domestic violence? So I have that for you. In 2021, we had forty-four total cases of domestic violence documented, ten of those being classified as aggravated assaults and two informational only, which is just like a verbal argument. And that was of two thousand two hundred and eight total reports taken from San Carlos. To compare to 2020, there were fifty-four total cases of domestic violence documented, thirty being classified as aggravated assaults were the felonies, from a total cases of two thousand and fifty. Residential burglary. Unfortunately, our residential burglaries are up seventeen reports from 2020. However, of the forty-eight burglaries, twenty-five of those reports were from a garage or carport that was left wide open, unlocked, or gained access from an unlocked vehicle and the garage door opener was pressed. The majority of the property that was taken from garages were bicycles. Year-to-date, as of yesterday, we only had ten residential burglaries in San Carlos. Five are from unlocked garages, and three were attempts where our community called it in and we were able to stop the burglary from occurring. This is where I get excited, the crime clearance rates. So I'm happy to report that your San Carlos Bureau had the highest crime clearance rate for violent crimes at seventy-three percent. This means that twenty-eight out of the thirty-eight violent crimes were solved. Of those ten left over, we have persons of interest and warrants waiting to capture the suspects. We also had a fifteen percent clearance in property crimes, and both clearance rates are above state and county averages. When compared to similar cities, San Carlos had the highest clearance rate. You see that really tall bar on the far right? Yeah, that's us. And then for same with property crimes, when compared to similar cities, San Carlos had the highest rate tied with the entire sheriff's office. Our emergency response times, we maintain just over a four-minute average from 2020, but we are down one second, so that's an improvement. I'll take it. In the past two years, we've averaged a hundred and thirty-two emergency calls for service. Overall, in that timeframe, we have averaged thirteen thousand five hundred and ninety-eight calls for service in the City of San Carlos. Traffic collisions. Overall, we are up one collision. However, we have decreased our auto versus pedestrian by six. Collisions involving DUIs went up from eight to nineteen, and that is attributed to people out drinking and driving and not at home anymore. Collisions involving injury, there was a sharp decrease from seventy-three to sixty. That's also something that we are proud of. Citations. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we did have a significant decrease in citations as seen from 2018 and 2019. Our presence in the community was maintained, and our enforcement efforts increased significantly towards the end of 2021. For 2022, we are on track to see our 2018 and 2019 numbers. Bit of analysis. So collisions are down significantly since 2016. They're in the mid-two hundreds, as you guys saw. Our enforcement is now on an upward trend, and we are now still involved with our saturated traffic enforcement program, which is a collaborative effort on the part of law enforcement community in San Mateo County to address the specific traffic issues and educate the public about traffic safety. This occurs in San Carlos every September, conveniently placed for back-to-school enforcement. The sheriff's office motor unit also has an internal step program where all of the motors visit each contracted bureau once a month. So, once a month, you have about six motors here addressing our high priority traffic complaints. I'm sorry, forgot to mention, we had, we had two DUI checkpoints in 2021, and we will mimic the same within 2022. We also have increased vehicle saturations around the holidays and also there are the weekend evenings. Community engagement. So this strategic communication that we talk about all the time, everything that we do and everything that we communicate is done with a purpose, and we want to communicate with everyone in San Carlos, but also council, city staff, and that is through press releases and also social media postings and the council, city council newsletter that goes out twice a month, most months. We also have a great relationship with the school district. I would have to say that it has definitely increased this past year as I've gotten to know Superintendent Dr. Frenches. We have each other's personal cell phone numbers, and anytime anything's going on at a school, we're on the phone with each other and we are collaborating efforts. We're also, we have a few seats at the table at the two-plus-two joint city and school committee meetings. And also now that all of our city events that are coming back, we're happy to be a part of those as well. Downtown services unit, you guys approved a full-time CSO. He is on a rotating schedule. He is usually always here Wednesday, Thursday, Fridays, and he rotates Saturdays and Tuesdays. And depending on what's going on downtown, we'll depend on if he's here all weekend. We have directed his focus on downtown safety, which includes traffic safety, parking complaints, any reported concerns, and just building relationships with our businesses. This data is new this year. I wanted to demonstrate our patrol footprint on school campuses throughout the school year. This does not include our school resource officer presence. And I will say that all of the principals have the cell phone number of the school resource officer, which has been a great addition. Calls for service can mean anything from a passing check to a medical call, report of criminal activity, meet the citizen, et cetera. And this data was pulled by the school address. As you can see, the TL, Mariposa and Charter had a bit more because there are three schools on that campus. Eucalyptus holiday lights. So thirty-two thousand dollars was allocated, but we only spent nine thousand nine hundred and fifty. So individuals were deployed during the three weekends prior to December twenty-fifth and the three days prior to the twenty-fifth. That demonstrated or gave us forty-four hours of deputy sheriff motors and sixty hours of community service officers. Overtime signers were created for deputies and CSOs on a voluntary basis. We had ten calls for service and two citations. To compare to 2020, during the same time, we had fourteen calls for service, and I believe there was just one citation that I could remember off the top of my head because I could not find that data. Our psychiatric emergency response team. So in the City of San Carlos, seventy-five percent of San Carlos staff are trained in enhanced crisis intervention training. The remainder will be trained by the end of 2022. This training focuses on disengagement, conflict de-escalation, and mental health resources for all patrol encounters. This training has changed our standards on how we respond to all calls for service. We are now automatically thinking de-escalation before we arrive. With respect to gun violence restraining orders, anytime PERC gets a referral or someone is fifty-one fifty, a gun violence restraining order is always considered, meaning, based on the totality of circumstances, can we place this person on a prohibited firearms list so they will never be able to carry, hopefully never be able to carry a firearm ever again? Our PERC team conducts that follow-up, but also our deputy sheriffs know what to look for to start that process. County council is involved, and we, there are a lot of follow-up needs to occur, but at the end of the day, we make sure that a person does not have a gun that should not. I would like to highlight one positive outcome that came from a crisis call for service in San Carlos. This narrative may seem long, but it clearly outlines why this training is essential, progressive, and necessary. And I have changed a few of the wording for safe messaging and just to be aware of our audience and not to have, to trigger anyone. On September seventh, 2021, at 5:00 PM, deputies responded to an apartment complex in San Carlos on a report of a male who got, who was going through a crisis. Upon arrival, deputies located the subject behind a locked metal gate that enclosed the pool area. The subject can be seen holding a large weapon. The subject was highly agitated and appeared to be highly intoxicated. Deputies safely repositioned to utilize time, distance, and cover to first gather resources and formulate a plan. Deputies learned the subject did not make any threats to harm anyone other than himself, commit any crimes, and no one was being held against their will. The sheriff's office enhanced crisis intervention-trained deputies were on scene and from a safe distance engaged the subject in conversation and attempted to persuade the subject to drop the weapon. The PERC team and our crisis negotiation unit also responded to aid in the ongoing negotiation and de-escalation attempts. These efforts continued for well over an hour and a half. However, the subject refused to comply and was begging deputies to end his life. The subject was contained in the pool area and surrounded by a fence. A drone was deployed to collect additional information and document the scene from overhead. The subject eventually fell asleep due to alcohol intoxication. The subject was up against the fence with the weapon seen in his partially open left hand. Using some creativity and outside-the-box thinking, deputies who were behind cover on the other side of a large fence were able to successfully retrieve the weapon from the subject's hand by using a large industrial-grade magnet, which they affixed to a painter's pole using duct tape. I'm sure most of you are wondering where a deputy got that sort of magnet. Well, during the hour and a half, someone knew Home Depot sold them and ran to purchase it. The subject remained asleep throughout the execution of the plan. Once the weapon was secured, deputies were able to safely detain the subject without using any force. The subject was evaluated, transported for further treatment and evaluation. This case highlights the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office Enhanced Crisis Intervention Training Program and how our crisis response is aligned with recent law changes as well as community expectations. Unless there's imminent danger or threats to others, deputy will conduct pre-assessments, gather as much information as possible, and form a plan for de-escalation prior to attempting contact with individuals in crisis. We understand that the mere presence of uniform deputies can escalate situations. And we will utilize time and distance wherever possible to assess the best course of action for each situation. Utilizing time and distance allows us to take advantage of the many resources the sheriff's office has at its disposal to aid in de-escalation attempts when feasible. So in 2020, PERC had a hundred and three fifty-one fifties or PERC-referred cases. And now in 2021, we saw an increase, and there was a hundred and forty-two. A lot of that has to do with just our deputies being aware. And anytime when we're in someone's home or we're out in public and we're having a call for service or contact, and if we notice or realize that someone may need resources, they are referred regardless of what is going on. So I just wanted to touch on NIBRs again a little bit and what that means for the future. So as I was pulling the data for this and going over it, at first, there was only forty-six residential burglaries. Well, that's because from the hierarchy, it showed that there, the other two, so there was a sexual assault with a burglary. So that burglary didn't show up because the sexual assault did prior to September. So there were two cases like that which made it forty-eight for the, the calendar year. So moving forward, we will see an increase in some crimes because naturally now we're counting every single crime. So I wanted to alert the council of that. But I will do my best along with our management analysts and our crime analysts to figure out the best way to compare data moving forward, starting in 2022. So on April twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety-three, the San Carlos police officers responded to the Devonshire Little Store on Devonshire Boulevard in San Carlos on the report of a shooting. Officers located Shu Ming Tang unresponsive and suffering from a gunshot wound. Shu Ming Tang was pronounced deceased, shocking the community. In 2018, San Mateo County Sheriff's detectives and investigators assigned to the cold case unit revisited the murder of Shu Ming Tang. With the recent investigation, detectives identified a person of interest, which led investigators to Washington County, Oklahoma. On March sixteenth, 2022, Reyna Hoffman Ramos was arrested in Oklahoma for the murder of Shu Ming Tang. This was once considered an unsolvable case, but the sheriff's office did not give up. It was a proud moment for the entire community. So lastly, we rely on the members of our community to report all crimes as soon as possible. This exponentially increases our chances of catching our suspects. Based on our clearance rate, I would have to say you guys are doing a great job. Keep up the good work. This concludes the presentation. However, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the individuals of the sheriff's office who made a tremendous impact at the San Carlos Bureau. Thank you for being resilient. This year was not easy. Thank you for keeping the City of Good Living an attractive place to live, work, and play. A special thanks to Sergeant Jesse Myers. A special thanks to Sergeant Jesse Myers and management analyst Kathleen Irvine, who's now retired, and I see she's attending tonight. Thank you for their work on this presentation and staff report. I would also like to thank the members of this community. There's a reason why your deputy sheriffs want to work here. This community is kind, giving, helpful, and heroic. Together, we can accomplish many things. Thank you. Questions?
Thank you, Chief Bell. Wonderful presentation. Um, are there any questions from the council this evening for Chief Bell? Councilmember Dugan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and uh, thank you, Chief Bell. Uh, very good uh, presentation. Um, and I will have some observations uh, a bit later. Um, and my question though is, you know, we, coming out of the pandemic, um, I know your department had some significant challenges and I know we had a couple of conversations about, um, you know, the way, there was a period of time when uh, after folks were arrested for minor crimes, they really uh, were basically immediately released uh, from, from our uh, county jail and and, and that presented some challenges. And, and i- if you could just um, uh, clarify where those policies are at, I believe we're past that now, but is there anything else ongoing pandemic-related that's um, impacting your, your ability to provide uh, uh, first-rate services?
So unfortunately, we don't have control or we didn't have control of the bail schedule and how people were released because that was done at the state level and also by the judges. So I can't say that we're back to normal. Um, the effect is we are backlogged with the courts. So they've reopened uh, Central Court and so there's a lot of cases that need to be heard. So there's just a backlog. But the courts are doing their best to make sure that everything gets through in a timely fashion.
Got it. And is that backlog, is that, is that, do you believe that's impacting San Carlos directly?
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, John. Any other questions from the council? Okay, uh, Vice Mayor Back.
Thank you, Madam. And I don't have any questions. I just want to thank the chief uh, for the presentation and for all the work of her, her department. I think they've done great work and I, I, you know, I look forward to continuing to work with them and I'm you know, the, the downtown police officer was something that I care a lot about, so I'm glad that that is uh, in place and, and moving along and hope that will help make a difference uh, in our community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Um, we're gonna do questions now and then we'll all save comments for after public comments. Um, Councilmember Collins, you have a question for the chief?
Actually, no, I'll wait for the comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so seeing no other uh, questions, we'll move to public comments. Uh, to make a public comment on this agenda item, you may raise your hand now. Crystal, is anyone in the waiting room waiting to make a comment?
Uh, there are no hand, oh, yes, we did. We do have one hand that shot up. Let me go ahead and try to fix what's going on here. I'll just share this one. Uh, Sonia Elks. Yeah, if you can go ahead and unmute.
I just want to say thank you to our amazing um, police department and especially thank you for the downtown presence and help with the eucalyptus and all the really, really active uh, um, community support that you give. Thank you.
Thanks, Sonia. Uh, Crystal, is there anyone else waiting to make a comment?
No, there are no further hands.
Okay. We'll move to council comments. Councilmember Collins, thanks for being patient.
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and uh, thank you, Chief Bell. It's a great presentation. I always look forward to these. Very thorough and I've said this many times, I'll say it again, law enforcement is probably one of the most difficult professions that anyone could ever uh, enter. It, it requires a lot of skills and I just wanted to give you my thanks and thanks to all the people who work with you and for you. It's an incredibly hard job. I wouldn't want to do it myself. I'm grateful that um, you guys have done so, such a good job for us over really over the last eleven, twelve years since uh, we contracted with the sheriff's department. And thinking back to the pandemic, there was a lot of uh, community, um, you know, uh, discomfort with what was happening after the George Floyd. I thought that your department just responded uh, very responsibly and calmly and deliberately, and it's just a reflection of the people that work with you. So thank you again. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Councilmember Dugan.
I thank you, Madam Mayor, and uh, yeah, Chief Bell, thank you. Uh, you and your department uh, just uh, really are of great service to San Carlos on, on so many levels. Really appreciate the way you partner with many aspects of our community, all the outreach, the partnerships with our schools, um, the uh, officer downtown, uh, all really, really excellent uh, and good work. Um, and it is just good to get the report out and see our long-term trends of both violent crime and, and even burglary uh, on the long-term trajectory, moving in the right direction and that uh, I'm sure does relate to uh, the really excellent uh, clearance rates. Um, so I, I'm, I'm, I'm glad you highlighted that and uh, I'm glad you're proud of that because uh, that, that really is a great measure. Um, and then I also really just appreciated your um, uh, the case study about the um, uh, the P R T team and how that incident was handled and um, I just uh, really, you know, it's uh, uh, and, and the perception um, of how police handle situations like that, I don't think is always matched by what you and your team uh, actually put out and, and really accomplished. And, and that case study just really highlighted uh, true excellence in uh, handling a situation like that and resolving it uh, safely for, for everyone involved. So really do congratulate you and your team on that one and just on your good service in general. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Councilmember Permer Lohan.
Great, thank you. I just want to acknowledge um, the P R T program. I know that this was something that was relatively new and I worked uh, with you, Chief Bell, last year to advocate for some additional dollars uh, from the federal government uh, that I know was received recently. Um, so I'm encouraged uh, by those results and hope to uh, continue to, to see more innovative approaches uh, to policing to make sure that uh, your team can meet the moment and have the appropriate resources. Um, because as we know, trying to understand and uh, the situation quickly is difficult um, in the moment. Um, and also looking forward to um, the R I P A uh, reports uh, when those are gonna be uh, brought forward. So uh, thank you to you and your team uh, for your service and, and your partnership.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Uh, I would just want to chime in too. I, I really appreciate the service. Um, like Sean, I am so glad that you mentioned the case study tonight of um, the uh, the P R T team and um, you know, really taking a concerted effort to de-escalate and and just the creative ways that um, you, you, you come to these, these issues um, with the magnets and also drones. I think that the more we can share stories like this to talk about the wonderful training that you do have, that you bring to these really serious situations, the resources that the sheriff's office has like drones that are just really valuable tools to be using in situations like this. Um, those are stories that, that I will continue to share as a council member and and um, you know, I'm, I'm always appreciate when those, those press releases come out and we can share those with the community. Um, and I also wanted to say that I've found um, the sheriff's office and, and you, Chief Bell, just very responsive to community concerns here in San Carlos. Um, almost immediate responses to emails. You know that Safe Roots for School is really important to me and when I receive a complaint from a parent, I send it over to you and um, you take immediate action. And I know that safety is just priority number one for you and um, public safety is also really important to us as a council. So I'm glad that we're aligned on that and look forward to supporting your efforts in the future. Thanks very much to you and your team.
Thank you. And thank you for the opportunity for us to be here.
Great. Well, we appreciate your reporting. Um, I don't see any other questions or comments, so we will move on to the next item in the agenda. Nine A, which is a public hearing, consideration of introducing an ordinance, amending San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter eighteen point eighteen, landscaping, replacing section eighteen point eighteen point zero seven zero trees, and eighteen point four one terms and definitions. This is an item that has been continued from City Council April eleventh meeting. And leading us off is Rucha Dundee tonight. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, members of the public, I'm Chad and the Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. The next item before you tonight is a continuation from the April eleventh City Council meeting for the proposed amendments regarding protected trees. Tonight, I would like to introduce our project team again. Andrea, Principal Planner, Julia, Hoffman, Contract Assistant Planner, and City Retained Arborist Ellen Shear, who are delighted to answer any questions. For tonight's meeting, the Planning Commission is recommending to adopt the proposed changes to code section eighteen point one eight point zero seven zero to be fully replaced and eighteen point four one terms and definitions. In today's presentation, I will be going through the background of the topic, summary of amendments since the April eleven, twenty-twenty-two meeting. Questions followed by time for public comments and then the final action. On April eleventh, uh, staff introduced the proposed protected tree ordinance to the City Council. The City Council proposed a few text amendments to the ordinance as well as several additions to the supplemental documents. Uh, those are the administrative guidelines and the preferred tree list. Therefore, the item was continued to tonight's meeting to allow staff time to work on these proposed changes. At tonight's meeting, the council will consider taking an action on the proposed amendments to the protected tree ordinance. The proposed uh, amendments to the ordinance from the April eleventh meeting, including adding provisions to allow relocation of protected trees uh, addressed uh, within the section uh, F four. In addition to that, um, the council also requested changes to include noticing for pruning in addition to protected tree removals. Uh, another addition uh, as suggested by council was to increase noticing period from ten to fourteen days as well as to allow arborist discretion for replaced sizes. So all these changes were made in the ordinance in section F four and five of the proposed ordinance uh, which you, uh, which you must have reviewed for uh, this meeting tonight. The remainder of the changes uh, from the last meeting were focused on items in the administrative guidance document and the preferred tree list. Uh, I would like to stress here that these are separate documents from the ordinance itself and the following additions were proposed by the uh, by the council. These were uh, within the administrative guidelines to add more graphics and photos to include exception procedures for one-on-one tree replacements, to uh, add submission requirements for tree relocation and within the preferred tree list to categorize trees by foliage type, form, and nature. Then classification of the olive tree species to specifically um, say as fruitless trees. Then adding undesirable species to not recommended category. So all these changes have been addressed within the administrative guidance document and the preferred tree list. Again, staff would also like to stress here again that uh, at this point, any future changes to these documents, such as adding additional details regarding procedures, adding more clarity on the preferred tree list, adding more categories uh, to the preferred tree list could be carried out um, at director level uh, later because these are supplemental documents and are not supposed to be adopted with the ordinance. Additionally, at this point, I would also like to note that um, in the last meeting, that's the April eleventh meeting, uh, there was some discussion that focused around updating user fees for protected tree removal and pruning. Um, updating user fees uh, is a separate agenda item and will be brought back to the City Council at a later date. At that time, the council will have a chance to provide input and feedback for fees related to protected trees. Next slide, please. Because this item was continued from the last meeting, the updated project timeline is as follows. Uh, if council decided to adopt the ordinance tonight, staff anticipates to go before council for second reading on May ninth. On May twenty-seven, the urgency ordinance, which was adopted last year, is set to expire and a new ordinance will become effective on June ninth. Again, for tonight's meeting, uh, the Planning Commission is recommending to adopt the proposed changes uh, to uh, chapter eighteen point one eight. This concludes my staff presentation. Again, I am uh, happy to answer any questions along with my team here and uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rucha. Are there questions from council this evening on this item? Vice Mayor Back.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, and just so, can I get clarified? So if I had a couple items that I wanted to ask that I thought we talked about last meeting but weren't included in the changes, is that this the appropriate time? Would you prefer that at a later time?
Are you asking me or Rucha?
I'm asking you, Madam Mayor.
I, I welcome all questions at this point.
Okay, so um, my first question is, uh, Rucha, first, thank you again for the presentation and for all the work from the, the team on this. For the uh, just noticing on the timing of this, is there a window between the twenty-seventh and the ninth? Do we need to do anything to extend the urgency ordinance by those couple of weeks to make sure that there's no lapse?
Yes, so uh, there is a gap of eight days when uh, the, the old ordinance will become effective. Uh, that's um, there is a gap between the urgency ordinance. So um, staff not anticipate to have too many applications during the eight business days. So um, we could continue with uh, the current timeline. Um, but yes, there will be a gap of eight business days.
And i- is that something that would be, and this may be a question for Greg, like if we at the next meeting wanted to extend it by eight day, by eight business days or the total days, is that an easy thing to do that we could do like as a consent item to make sure there is no gap? Or is that a more um, challenging thing to do? Or is it even possible?
Uh, we could, we could extend if the council directs that and it is a uh, public hearing, so we would, we'd just have to notice a public hearing and and then conduct the hearing and then we could uh, extend it to cover the gap here. If that's the council direction. And we, we, staff feels that the uh, you know, the, because of the strong intention by, that would be evidenced by the council having um, uh, you know, introduced and then later adopted the ordinance, that that's clear policy direction to um, to apply the, the new rules and not, and not process applications during that time. This is a little bit different than a development application where someone um, has, is trying to um, apply the, apply a certain code to a development application. It's really a tree discretionary decision by staff. So I mean, if, if the council feels more comfortable about having an extension, we can bring that forward uh, um, and to cover the, the eight business day gap. Um, but, but we've staffs, we thought about it and we thought that it wasn't necessarily required in this type of instance.
Okay, that, that's helpful. I appreciate that uh, clarification both from both you and Rucha on that. Um, the other question I wanted, we, we received some emails from individuals regarding the coastal redwood trees and I just wanted to get some clarification. My understanding is the coastal redwood trees would remain as uh, protected trees. It's just that we're not recommending them as replacement trees because they sort of aren't, don't do as well over here. So you would still need a permit to uh, if it was the right, if it was of size to remove the coastal redwood. But we just are saying that because they typically grow uh, in more heavier fog areas and other things, those are, they're not sort of ideal for replacement trees. Is that accurate?
That is correct. That is correct. Yes.
Great. Thank you. Great. Thank you. And then the two items that, I know I'm probably going over my number of questions, but the two items that I, one clear, two items that I wanted to just raise, I thought we, one that we talked about, one just wanted to add. I thought at the last meeting, we talked about adding a provision to require the arborist to do annual checks on replacement trees for the first, maybe I think three years, knowing that sometimes they don't take, they're not as, and to make sure that sort of the trees are healthy and the replacement has, has worked. I don't see that in there. And so that's something that I believe we talked about. We had gotten some public comment on. And I wanted to follow up on that to see where that ended up.
Yes, so the proposed ordinance, so let me back up a little bit. So replacement trees are protected for our proposed ordinance. So irrespective of size, any replacement tree that be required will be protected for the protected tree definition. So applicants would be required to maintain the trees for the life of the project. So staff has not certainly said that, okay, two years or three years of maintenance will be required. But any tree that is a replacement tree would be protected through this ordinance. And then additionally, at the discretion of the city arborist, our conditions of approval requiring in-person inspection could also be required through our ordinance because the ordinance allows the city arborist to apply in conditions of approval. And I would also like to note here that if council would like to require those kind of inspections, like more resources could be required, which could also involve dealing with challenges such as, you know, accessing people's backyards and keeping up to the number of trees in town over the years. So therefore, staff has left the discretion to the city arborist to require inspections for trees. But yes, at this point, all trees are not required to be inspected for ordinance.
Okay. And then the other, I guess since we're sort of adding the, thank you for Richard for that. I think I'll just call my colleagues on that one after when we have some comments. I have a little bit stronger opinion on that. And then just the, the decision to make the, to permit a fee instead of replacement tree right now is left to the discretion of the arborist only. And so it would be my suggestion in that case, when we're not replacing, to think about whether we would also require the, the community development director as sort of a secondary signature, sort of a backup to, to sort of approve that as well. So it's sort of, we have a second, just so that it's not all, all on the arborist. There's a second sort of approval around that would be the only other piece I would sort of think might be, be useful when we're not going to be doing replacements or the recommendation is not to do replacements. So that's all I had. I appreciate all the work and the additional work around that and I'll, I'll sort of follow up with commentary or my, after we, we close the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam. I see Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really just had one question for clarification. Some of the letters or emails that we got referred to, the redwood tree minimum needing to be, I think eighteen inches in diameter. And when I look at our, our proposed ordinance, it's actually fifteen inches in diameter. And that seems to be stricter than some were suggesting. I want to make sure that I understand that that, if I'm understanding that correctly, would you, would you agree?
Yes, you are understanding it correctly. Our ordinance proposes to have redwood trees protected that are more than fifteen inches, fifteen inches or more. So that makes it more stricter than other cities or more stricter than eighteen inches. That is.
Okay. And I assume that's also measured at fifty-four inches above the ground?
Yes.
Thank you, Rucha. Nice presentation and thank you for answering my question.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a couple, Rucha, that I'll ask now and then we can circle around. And we received some public input about the height, the measurement height on the trees because it increased, it went up higher from the urgency ordinance now. And this might be a question for the arborist or you. Can you just talk a little bit about raising that height to fifty-four inches? Because some have said that this will greatly reduce the number of trees protected because many species never reach the given diameter at the greater height. So just wondering if you can address that, please.
Sure, yes. So our current ordinance requires measurement of protected trees at forty-eight inches from natural grade and staff is proposing to change that to fifty-four inches. And that is to put our ordinance in line with the industry standard. So if we review all, most of the protected tree ordinance for our neighboring cities or even other bigger cities, measuring tree trunk at fifty-four inches is a standard practice which we wanted to adopt in our proposed ordinance. So therefore, we have proposed that changed. And then also comparing the height, in fact, our ordinance is making it even stricter. So I would like to show you the slide which has a direct comparison. So Crystal, could you please advance the slides? Yeah, yes, the previous night please. Yeah, so see if you look at the left column, that's the proposed changes. All trees are becoming like around nine inches in diameter that are become, that are proposed to be protected. So if we compare this with other cities such as San Mateo, Burlingame, Redwood City, most of, most of them start their, you know, diameter at ten inches while our city is proposing it to be at nine inches, which is making it even more stricter. So I'd just like to highlight that at this point.
Thank you. I feel like I had one other question. Are there any other questions from council while I'm thinking of my other question? There was a lot of public comments today, Rucha. I don't know if you have any other comments to address kind of the flurry of emails that came in this afternoon with concerns about the tree ordinance.
I think the questions from council member Rack answers a few of them. So I have, I think, covered most of them.
Okay. Are there any other questions from council at this point? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and open up public comments since this is a public hearing. You may raise your hand now via Zoom or call in at the number at the screen. Crystal, is anyone in the waiting room?
Yes, we have two hands up at the moment. First up is Debbie Baldacci. You can go ahead and unmute.
Hi, council members, and thank you for reading our emails and taking comments. Number one, the first point is in the email that I sent, it is true, and I missed it, that the redwood trees were designated as protected trees and heritage trees. However, the change in the measurement for the redwood trees is you're measuring eighteen inches in diameter at fifty-four inches instead of forty-eight, which was in the urgency ordinance. So that greatly increases the size of a redwood tree that would need a special permit to be removed. So that is very inconsistent with the urgency. The second thing is we're asking to please strengthen the prohibitions against removing heritage trees solely for the purpose of development. And on page four twenty-four, section five, noticing requirements, the noticing requirements for only three hundred feet for people living that close, it should be six hundred feet as it's consistent with other jurisdictions. And there's no remedy for people failing to notify. Number three, please remove the revision that changes that diameter to the higher, higher side on the tree for the reasons mentioned. And then finally, number four, please remove any loopholes that would allow a developer to remove trees from a parcel in advance of an application of development. In this case, Vista Del Grande has not submitted an application, but community members did submit photos showing that there were a number of trees that appeared to have been removed from that location. The, it's important if someone held a privately owned forest, this large forest of twenty-two acres with Black Mountain and Vista Del Grande, there should be community-wide notification of the number of trees they're removing from this forest. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Daddy.
Next up is Bill Chang. You should be able to unmute.
Hi, Madam Mayor, this is Bill Chang, your, your friendly neighborhood PG&E rep. Madam Mayor, council, thank you for, for this opportunity. I'm actually here for a different item, but since this came up, I feel compelled to at least say a few words. As, as all of you know, PG&E routinely manages millions and millions upon millions of trees throughout our service territory, including, including San Carlos and, and utility work, whether routine or wildfire prevention or the reliability and the safety of the system does require from time to time for us to remove a tree, regardless of size or species. We also routinely trim trees. And so I just wanted to mention that to council and so also mention that PG&E will continue working with city staff when that, when a tree removal and/or tree trimmings have to take place. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Next up is Zinavoi Vishenstot, Vishenholz.
I think for, thank you, for taking my call. This is just a general comment. During the last council meeting, Mr. Alby Mulby, the city manager, said that the, the state laws prohibit cities from adopting ordinance, ordinances limiting housing developments. So I have challenged Mr. Mulby to Lizzie's laws in writing. Instead, Mr. Mulby called me and during the telephone conversation, promised to research the subject further with attorneys and provide answers before the next council meeting. Well, as of this moment, no answers were provided. The truth is that there are no such laws. Even the latest SB nine law specifically says that builders of duplexes and fourplexes, okay, you know, have to abide by the existing city ordinances, except for those ordinances which specifically forbid building duplexes and fourplexes. It's nothing to do with trees, okay? And we realize that there is a lot of pressure from special interests to make it easier to develop new housing. But I hope our council, council will have the wisdom and courage to withstand this pressure and protect the interests of our community by focusing exclusively on affordable housing and protecting our environment. This is, I think it's just common sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Sean Williams, followed by Jeffrey Tepper. Sean, you should be able to unmute.
Okay, thank you for letting me speak. I'm actually going to be talking about another item on the agenda. But I used to be for City of San Mateo Commissioner for Parks and Rec. And we made our heritage tree ordinance much stricter. And one of the unintended consequences is less compliance when you do that. And then the lady that was speaking earlier, that's encouraging you to be, I don't know, I guess more in line with what other cities do. Not necessarily a good enough reason to, to make a change. You gotta ask yourself, what, what's the goal and how do we best accomplish the goal? So I wanted to share, share that with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up we have Jeffrey Tepper, followed by Sharir Hamami. Jeffrey, if you can go ahead and unmute.
Hello, and thank you for taking my concerns, bringing to the council. Appreciate that. I, I was just really, first I had a question and the question is, how many trees do we take down each year by homeowners? Do we have any sense of what that, the scope of that is in a year? And I don't know whether you're going to answer now or come back to that. And I just wanted to put that in perspective relative to the amount of trees that come down due to development. I note that the VIV and the Vista Del Grande developments are taking down. What I can see is about two hundred heritage and significant trees. And I thought it would be useful to put that into perspective and I'll take an answer to that anytime. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. We'll, we'll circle around to responses after we receive all of the public comments.
Okay, and the last hand I see up at the moment is Sharir Hamami. Can unmute.
Okay. Hi, thank you for taking my question. I attended the last council meeting and I asked a question. I would like to kind of repeat that because I still don't have an answer. And again, I live adjacent to the eight oh eight Alameda property and along the questions that have been raised already. As one plan that I understand, VIV is proposing to cut down hundred fifty heritage and nine significant trees. Maybe it's going to be more, I'm not sure. But one question is that, is this like by far the largest application of any kind of a ordinance in this, in this regard? And I would tend to think so, but I'm not sure. I just wanted to ask that. And then really the question I asked is that what part of this new ordinance would impact their ability to do this easier or maybe more difficult? And, you know, is it going to make it easier? And I'm really focused on the large developer, not, not somebody who's going to cut down one tree, but somebody who's planning to cut down hundreds of trees basically in one shot. And I, if this is the largest application of this, I would find it very difficult if the, the, basically the, the work has not been done to see the impact of that on this project. Because that's what we do in business. Basically, the first thing is to look at the largest customer and the largest application. Thank you very much for taking my question.
Thank you. Crystal, is there anyone else in the waiting room this evening?
No, there are no further hands.
Okay. So I think what we could do is either get answers to these questions and then close the public hearing or we could close the public hearing now and then get answers to the questions.
Madam Mayor, I will move to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Crystal, could you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Rack.
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan.
Yes.
Councilmember Collins.
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan.
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell.
Yes. Okay, I would like to thank everyone who called in tonight. That was a significant amount of public comments and they're great items for council discussion. I guess maybe one of the top topics that seems to be brought up by the public is how this ordinance will interplay with a large development project that could potentially propose to remove many heritage trees. I see Jeff coming on. Jeff, did you want to try and address some of those questions?
Sure, I can try from a general sense. We want to obviously avoid talking about any specific project that may be proposed and considered by the city tonight as that's not what's on the agenda. But in general, there really is no difference in terms of the size of a project versus the applicability of the ordinance. Whether it would be a single-family home who was considering, you know, doing, you know, some kind of an expansion and doing a remodel and they were considering taking out a single tree, the ordinance would apply equally to a project and in the same ways that it would apply to a, a larger scale project. I'm not sure if, if community development has an answer to how many removal permits we get each year. They're often issued as emergent. They're often issued as emergency permits, um, when homeowners find, um, or discover a problem with a large existing tree near their home, um, that's, um, suffering health issues or damage of some sort and needs to be removed. That, that tends to be, um, a good portion of the emergency permits we remove. Um, I think in terms of trying to compare a large-scale project, I mean, obviously a large-scale project, um, in, in a relatively undeveloped area is gonna, um, need to consider more trees than, um, or like a redevelopment project, uh, that, that's already, you know, full, been fully built out in the past. It's being, um, uh, rebuilt, so that, that would, um, you know, be a difference, but we'd have to, you know, we'd have to see the project. And I would probably think that a better metric, even if you were looking at doing that, even though it's still not apples to oranges, would be to look at acreage of the city. Um, you know, I mean, uh, most, most of our homes are, you know, less than a quarter acre in size, um, far less than a quarter acre in size, um, versus an 18-acre, uh, or 12-acre property. Um, so it would be difficult to, to try to compare those things. But the applicability of the ordinance will be the same regardless of the number of trees involved. It, it will still be, um, you know, it will still be the guiding ordinance, um, of the city. So I think that covers really most of the general questions that I heard. I know there were questions about housing and applicability laws. And, um, I spent about an hour on the phone with that, um, uh, gentleman, uh, last week and, and tried to explain a lot of different applicabilities of the law. But I think the council, um, understands and, and folks that have tracked the hu- housing issues understand that, um, putting obstacles in the way of, um, local obstacles in the way of, of building housing has been frowned upon by the state of California in recent years, including, um, uh, lawsuits that have been filed by the state against cities who have attempted to do that sort of thing. Um, so certainly the tree ordinance will apply, the project will be reviewed, um, as, as are all projects. Um, landscaping, um, replanting will be a big component of that. The community will receive notifications, um, when that project does come forward and, and is considered and reviewed by the Planning Commission. And all those, you know, all the final plans and proposals that are being made by the property owner, um, will be submitted in, uh, uh, to the community for their review, along with our own, uh, public review process that we're required to, uh, to conduct.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. And if, if the public has concerns about trees being removed on a property, they can forward that over to code enforcement and, and the city can look into that. It, it seems like there's some concerns about loopholes of developers removing trees before an application is submitted.
Uh, that's correct. We get those kinds of complaints from time to time. Uh, code enforcement is a division within our community development department, so they can contact, uh, community development or code enforcement specifically to report that. We do have some online reporting features as well, so the public can report that if they see, um, trees being removed by anybody, uh, in the city that they feel, um, uh, might be, um, might be being handled, uh, inappropriately and, uh, not in compliance with our ordinance. I think, um, the notifications that you've included in your ordinance for the public in the expanded area will help to, uh, ensure that, uh, folks have access to information for trees that are being properly removed, having gone through the process. So that I think that's a good thing. Um, and if they see anything they're not sure about, they can sure let us know and we'll follow up.
Okay, thank you. And I saw Andrea turn on her camera. Andrea, did you have a number of how many, um, permits we issue for tree removal?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, I do. Uh, so last year, 2021, we issued 109 permits. Um, I should point out that that does include emergency permits and some of the permits also, uh, are for more than one tree. So it's, it's really tracked by number of permits. Um, this year to date, we've, uh, had 20 applications so far for tree removal. Um, and just to speak to the emergency removals a little bit, they tend to, um, ebb and flow. You know, after big storms, we always see an increase, um, because branches have cracked or, or trees are about to fall. Um, so it's a little bit hard to predict when we get those, but they do, they are, you know, they do sort of ebb and flow, just depending on, on what's going on.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that data. I see Councilmember Collins and then the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, just one quick observation and I, I wanna hopefully get it validated. And the other is a question of staff regarding, um, what's being removed. I just did the math. I think someone mentioned that there were over 200 trees being removed on the, the area, um, along Alameda, which I think it was mentioned that it was 22 acres. Uh, so I did some math and, and that works out to about nine trees per acre. And if the average lot in San Carlos is about 5,000 square feet, that's about 1.1 trees per 5,000 square foot lot. So the number, you know, the number 200 sounds big, but when you break it down on a, you know, a standard lot level, it's not that many. Um, and by the way, thank you Andrea for the, the data on how many permits are issued. Um, the other question I had was regarding these trees that are being removed. Um, I'm wondering, are they, are they heritage trees? Are they protected? Uh, are they trees that were maybe planted in, you know, non-native trees that were planted in clusters? Uh, I, I'm curious about that. And if it is up on that, um, Black Mountain Lot area, at least by my personal observations, having visited that area, um, many, many, many of those trees are eucalyptus trees. So, and those are not protected. So, uh, if I'm wrong, please, if someone can, Andrea or, um, Jeff or somebody can clarify that for me, I most appreciate it.
Um, so I can again, you know, trying to speak generally and not, not about the specific, um, projects. I can say, um, that, you know, calls we've gotten in that area recently, um, for checking, um, tree removals have been, um, trees that aren't protected, as you mentioned. Um, regarding specific projects, we'd need to look at the specifics. Um, but for these larger projects, in addition to complying with the ordinance, um, we will most likely see and, and in this case, we'll see, um, environmental review completed as well. So in addition to having to comply with the ordinance, there'll be analysis of the environmental impact, um, of removal of any protected trees. Um, I don't have the exact number for you, um, so that's something we can come back with. Um, but that, that will be forthcoming and, and of course have its own public hearing as well.
Sure. And, and is it also true that once that these developments take place, that there's a requirement that they plant a certain number of trees?
Yes, that would be part of, uh, their proposal. So that would be known as part of, of what they're proposing.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thanks, Sean. Uh, Vice Mayor Rack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, and I just, uh, in, in, speaking very generally, there's, there hasn't been an actual approval of any removals for any large, uh, projects at this point, too. We're sort of speculating because nothing's been approved at this point. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Um, and then, so I just wanted to follow up on one point of clarification that was, uh, I think Ms. Baldacci mentioned about the redwood tree change. And I think she said it's 18 inches, but just it's 54 inches in height and 15 inches of circumference, not 18, right? We lower the circumference or the diameter, whatever, we lower the diameter when we increase the height. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. And, and is there, um, any, she also mentioned about sort of a remedy for any failure to disclose about, uh, permit. Is that something that is, is, is there anything in there or assuming, is there any, can you comment on that?
Yeah, Andrea, uh, maybe you could answer that.
Sure, thank you. Um, so I would say that this proposed ordinance actually closes that loophole that we had in our previous ordinance. Uh, our previous ordinance had a finding that would allow someone to remove a tree, um, for, uh, economic enjoyment of their property. So pretty broad finding that could be made relatively easy. Um, that's been removed for this, this ordinance. Regardless of whether a development occurs or not, uh, someone would be able to remove a tree for other reasons such as health or risk, um, or utility interference. Um, so, so regardless of whether development is proposed or not, if someone...
That, that wasn't my, sorry, that wasn't my question. My question was, uh, Ms. Baldacci mentioned that if you, it, there was no remedy in place for failure to disclose your permit.
Right.
Right, that was...
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. If you were answering that, then I apologize. I thought that was, uh...
It was taking a long road to get there. Um, so, so if they don't meet any of those other findings, the only one left would be development. And so in order to meet that finding, it's, so regardless of them about development, they could remove it under, you know, illness or risk it's about to fall. If it is a development reason, then they would have to have an active development application, one, so we would know about it. Um, and two, as part of that application, they would have to demonstrate why the tree needs to be removed, why it can't be designed around, et cetera. So theoretically, it could be that someone gets a tree removal permit and ends up developing later on the lot. However, that permit would be issued for risk or health or, um, utility. So it would be issued regardless of whether development was going to occur, if that makes sense.
It, it makes sense. I guess my, I, I think we're kind of talking past each other. I'm not, I, I, I think what the question was, if there's a permit issued and the person who receives the permit does not disclose to the individuals or homeowners or business owners within 300 feet of that, is there any remedy i- in that case?
I see. So it's about the notification.
Not notifying, it's supposed not notifying.
Okay, um, and now I understand. So, uh, no, there's nothing explicitly, um, in the ordinance about that. Um, it is something that if the council would like, uh, we could add. And I apologize, I interpreted the email more as not allowing construction within a certain amount of time. Um, but notification is something that we could definitely, um, include if the council would like.
Okay. And, and, and I'm, I'm open to, to that, i- if that's the case. And then my just last piece, I just wanna follow up. I- is there, and just thinking about the distance, I know we expanded the distance for notification to 300 feet. Are there instances where there may not be, that may not be enough? I'm just wondering, like, there's a creek bed and then, so the people behind the creek bed, we're now getting, you know, it's the creeks. Uh, I, I just don't know if there, are we, you know, is that an issue or not by, you know, do we think of that? And if there, we don't, then that's fine. Or if we do, is there a, a reason or reclamation to expand more? I know we've already expanded it 300 and that may be enough. So just sort of a follow-up question, um, because that was raised by one of the callers.
Sure, I think that's, uh, really a policy call by the council. Um, 300 feet is consistent with our noticing requirements for development. Um, so if you did wanna to go bigger, um, it would be larger than our, our normal notification for homes or new buildings or things like that. But, um, it, you know, it's definitely a policy call.
Okay. No, I didn't have a strong opinion. I just wanted to get clarification on that. And, and I just would just add that I think, you know, the intent of this, of this ordinance is to be more protective of trees, uh, of these trees and to be more restrictive around things. So I appreciate the work that's been done, uh, to do that. So, thank you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Dugan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And, uh, and I just want to, um, you know, again, just the passion, uh, our community has around trees is, uh, is, is really something and, and something that I share. And I, um, uh, applaud staff's, uh, long and thorough process and all the good work and analysis that has gone in to this update to our ordinance. And, and this is a very thorough update. Um, many thoughtful, uh, changes have been made and, and uh, I also appreciated all my colleagues', uh, good inputs here. Um, you know, we cycled hard on this in our last meeting. And now we've come back with, uh, even, um, some additional thoughtful, uh, updates. So, um, I feel that this ordinance is in a very good place right now. And, and what this ultimately is doing is it's tightening, um, making it harder to remove trees, um, in San Carlos. And I think we're, we're all in alignment on that. Um, and I think that's a good thing. So, uh, with regard to any specific development, uh, whatever they might have been able to do before, uh, it's, uh, trees are even more protected now after, uh, assuming we pass this. So, uh, for those reasons, I'm, uh, confidently, uh, supporting this ordinance this evening and look forward to, to passing it. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Uh, I have one question and a comment. Um, Richa, could you just touch, uh, this was raised a couple of times, too. Could you touch on why we changed from circumference to diameter measurement? There was some concern by the public that calculating diameter might be a little trickier than for a homeowner to just go out and measure the circumference of the tree.
Sure. So that was more of, um, making our ordinance in line with the, um, with the standards. So most of the cities around us and, um, a standard practice is to measure it in, uh, diameter than circumference. So, um, I could, uh, yeah, based on my research, most of the cities do it like we have proposed. But, uh, if there are any technical reasons for that, I would let the arborist, uh, respond to that and defer, uh, it to her. So Ellen is here, maybe she can add something.
Uh, yes, hello. Um, so measuring trunk diameter at 54 inches is how arborists determine the tree protection zone during development. So, um, the calculation from circumference to diameter is relatively simple. You, if you measure circumference and you divide by pi, which is 3.14, or you can wrote, round down to three if you want, make it even easier. Um, then you get diameter. So we could, uh, include in the administrative guidelines, um, directions on how to calculate diameter from circumference to make it easy. If it's reported as a circumference, it's an easy calculation for staff to make as well.
Okay, thank you very much. It makes sense to bring things in line with industry standards. So that's, that's something. Um, and then my, my one comment, and I know that we're not voting tonight on the preferred tree list, but I do, I know that it will go through several iterations. And my one suggestion on that is just to make it really crystal clear for our residents on, um, if something is recommended or prohibited, um, I think that we could tighten that language a little bit more. So, um, in the next iteration, I think that would be something to take a look at. Um, okay, so as we look at, there was, there's a couple of proposals on the table from the Vice Mayor, um, regarding, uh, having the Community Development Director as a secondary signatory, uh, on the fee instead of the replacement tree issue. Adam, did you wanna, I see your hand up. Did you wanna?
Oh, I was just gonna come, I, I was, I didn't, was moving on to that, so I'm happy to have you, you raise it, that's fine.
Okay, well, you tell me if I get any of it wrong. So that's one, the second, the right, secondary, secondary signatory. Um, you talked about conditions of approval, um, that might require some more resources. And there was a third one.
That was second, that was separate, I think. That's something different. I only had two, which was the, the, the sort of the secondary sort of approval. And then the second one was just, uh, the sort of verification by the arborist a- at a certain period, one to three years, that tree, the replacement tree is healthy. I guess I'm just concerned that it, you know, if you put a, uh, you know, we, we're talking about maybe a much smaller tree in a backyard, there's not really an opportunity to, to verify that. So I'd like to just try to have some process in place to make sure the replacement tree is healthy and, and surviving.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan.
Yeah, thank you. I wanna, uh, thank, uh, the members of the community for, um, um, participating in this dialogue. Uh, trees are really important and, um, it's part of our symbol of our community. So I'm, I'm glad to hear that we're having this conversation. And again, I appreciate Vice Mayor Rack for bringing this forward so that we can contemporize our, um, current ordinance and bring it up to date. Um, I, I would be in favor of having, uh, arborist or the Community Development Director, um, weigh in on the fee, um, as, uh, proposed earlier, just so that there's a, you know, we don't have to, uh, you know, wait. Or if there's some, uh, somebody's not available, there's always somebody a- around to address that. Um, when it comes to the verification of the health of the tree, um, what I heard from staff was, um, that could potentially be a lot of trees, uh, that are difficult to access. So I'm wondering, would there be a middle road where we could compromise in that if the homeowner or the person who planted the tree, uh, needed some advice or needed for it to be checked out, that that service would be made available, um, on a as-needed basis? I don't know if that would get, um, it, what you're looking for, Vice Mayor Rack, but maybe that's a way that we could try to approach that challenge.
Um, I think that's a, an interesting idea. I, I guess I'm, and, and I just wanna make sure that those replacement trees are, are growing and healthy. And I, you know... And I, you know, it's, I mean, I, I want to take best intentions to heart. So, but, um, that's, that's why I'm sort of asking for the, the verification process versus, uh, yeah, I, I think it's always good that we have the ability of the, the city arborist to provide insight, um, to people for replacement trees. I do think that's a good idea. Um, I don't know if that needs to be part of the ordinance, but, um, I, I, I would like to see some sort of verification process, whether it's, doesn't have to be every year, it could be at, at three years. So it's only a one-time check, um, versus, you know, it doesn't have to be an annual, annual check for that one. And I, I think if we're talking about, you know, on average, 108 trees a year, we're, you know, it's not, to me, it's not a, a huge number to, to deal with. And maybe there's a different way that the arborist can come up with a process to, you know, verify it a different way without having to do a check. I'm open to that, uh, sort of creativity.
Richa, do other cities, I know you've done so much research. Do other cities require homeowners to send in a photo after a year or any, is there any follow-up that other cities do?
No, that I have researched. I haven't seen anything like that.
I mean, I wonder if the arborist may have some, if Ellen may have any thoughts on that.
Um, I am not aware of any other cities that do that. I think there are some that tie a final inspection of the landscape with the final sign-off for occupancy. So yeah, that's something. Um, but I, I'm not aware of, I think it's a great idea though, for the record.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna, I guess I'll still hold true that I, I will, I will join Ellen in thinking it's a great idea to have verification to make sure that the trees are healthy after they've been planted and have that they've taken root. And I'm, I'm hope, and hopefully two more of you will feel the same way.
I, I'm open to it. I, I guess I'm wondering if, um, we could leave it up to the city arborist to put it into the administrative guidelines and, and figure this out at a staff level. Um, some kind of follow-up, but.
I'd be fine with that.
Uh, Councilmember Collins.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think my only question is, does the inclusion of that particular piece affect the language of, of this ordinance? And does it delay it at all? Can, in other words, can we, uh, assuming we, we all vote for it or we have a majority of votes for it tonight, can this ordinance be approved as is and that particular piece be written into administrative guidelines? Do I understand that correctly or do we have to send this back once more, which I'd really rather not do?
I can ask, if, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
Yes, that, uh, provision could be added to the administrative guidelines. Uh, we do not have to make a change in the ordinance. So, uh, that is why we have the supplemental guidance, uh, document. Um, and procedural details could be included in that document at, uh, the discretion of the director.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan.
Yeah, thank you. So I, I would, um, I hear Vice Mayor Rack's concern, um, that we want to make sure that the trees are, um, rooted and, and can thrive. And, um, I would be open to, uh, the arborist coming up with some recommendations that are added to the administrative document, uh, at a later time. So perhaps it's through a photo documentation, but I would hope to avoid administrative burden. But rather, um, have a practical approach, uh, to ensuring the health of the trees. And I'm not, not the expert, so I wouldn't know what that would look like. I would rely on, uh, the arborist to do so.
Okay, thank you, Laura. I think that's three vote. Unless anyone else wants to chime in on that, but I think.
Thank you for that. Um, and I guess on the verification one, I think Laura was supportive of that. Is there any other one else? And then I'm, I'm happy to move this thing.
My only comment is as long as it's not unduly burdensome on staff.
Would Al from Community Development like to weigh in? And I think Adam's asking for a second signature perhaps from you or your department.
Yes, Madam Mayor, that's, that's fine. That'll work just fine.
Okay, I support that too.
So, so if I'm gonna make the motion on this, is there only the one item that actually needs to be added to the ordinance? And the, the second piece is just will be handled at, at the administrative level? Is that correct, Greg?
That's right. I, I would just define it as close, as close as you can to what your intention is. And then we'll modify the ordinance at the, at this introduction stage for, for your adoption later. We'll just add that language in them. And then you could just give direction as a council on the administrative rules.
So I don't need to, I just, and then have we given direction now on that or does that need to be clarified further?
Do, do we think we have staff, do we think we have clear enough direction on the ordinance change that what they want this council's considering?
I do. I think we have enough direction on both the ordinance and the administrative procedures that will develop.
Okay, so I'll just add that one piece in the ordinance line. And then I will not mention anything about the administrative procedures because it sounds like it's covered. So, okay, as long as.
Vice Mayor, sorry, one thing. Did you want to discuss the noticing requirement, the 300 feet versus extending it? Or you're good with the 300 feet?
I'm okay with the 300 feet. I feel like if it is in line with what we've, we do for other development. And then I think that's appropriate.
Okay, I see Ron shaking his head. Okay, please proceed.
Thank you. Uh, I move to introduce ordinance number.
1580.
An ordinance to the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending San Carlos Municipal Code Title 8, Chapter 18 dot 18, landscaping replacing sections 18 dot 18 dot 070 dash trees and 18 dot 41 dash terms and definitions. And including the amendment to require a second signature of verification when a, when, uh, the arborist recommends fee, repli- fee in, uh, for trees instead of, uh, fee instead of replacement. Is that, hopefully that works.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Crystal, could you please call the roll? Oh, sorry, Councilmember Collins, you had your hand up.
Thank you. I, just one comment before we vote. Again, thanks to the, all the people that, uh, wrote in. This ordinance is a huge improvement over what we had before. It may not be perfect, but then again, I'm not sure what perfect looks like. So with that, I, I will just go ahead and vote.
Thank you. I think that's open. Uh, Crystal, any further discussion from council? No, okay, um, Crystal, could you please call the roll?
Okay. Councilmember Palmer Lohan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rack.
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan.
Yes.
Councilmember Collins.
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that passes. It is now 8:48 and our next item might take a while. I'm not sure how much public comment we will receive. So, um, wondering if council wants a 10-minute break or if you would like to proceed.
We'll go to the break. 10 minutes.
Yes, okay. We'll, um, resume again at nine o'clock sharp. Thank you. I see the council has rejoined. After our break, we will now move on to item 9B of the public's hearing. Consideration of adopting an interim ordinance pursuant to Government Code Section 65858B, establishing a moratorium on the submission, consideration, or approval of applications for lotline adjustments, subdivisions, discretionary land use approvals, or building permits necessary for development within the northeast area of the City of San Carlos, subject to certain enumerated exceptions. Presenting on this item tonight is Megan Woolley-Ozdale. Megan, oh, uh, Madam, uh, Councilmember Palmer Lohan, you have your hands up.
Yes, I was just wondering, is this the point at which we do disclosures or report comments?
Um, Greg, do you want to weigh in on disclosures?
I, I think, um, the time to do disclosures would be, uh, probably, um, at, at the mayor's discretion just before you, um, start considering the item. So.
So now?
Now would be fine, or, 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 or when you get to the discussing the item.
Okay, um, let's do it as we're ramping up for discussion. I'll, I'll remember that item. Thank you, Laura. Okay, I will turn it over to Megan.
Great, thank you so much. Well, good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Megan Woolley-Ozdale, Senior Planner in the Community Development Department. I'd like to start by introducing the project team for this item, which includes Michael Biddle, Special Legal Counsel, Greg Rubin, City Attorney, Al Savay, Community Development Director, and Lisa Porus, Advanced Planning Manager. Next slide, please. For my presentation this evening, I will provide an overview of the background or why we are considering this moratorium, information about the proposed development moratorium and our staff recommendation. Next slide, please. The council recognizes the importance of planning for the future of this area, which we are calling the Northeast Area. Historically, this area has been referred to as the Harbor Industrial Area. As a part of the city's 2022 strategic plan, the council established a goal to create a Northeast Area-specific plan in response to continued development interests in the life sciences and biotechnology sectors, and to develop policies and strategies to incorporate housing as a part of new development. This area was previously annexed into the City of San Carlos's city limits in 1997. And since that time, there has been very few changes in the land use regulations for the area. Next slide. The purpose of the Northeast Area-specific plan is to create a plan for anticipated new development, explore housing as a new use within the area, with the overall goal of creating a vibrant mixed-use community that incorporates both the existing and potentially new uses. The plan will also address environmental remediation and the aging infrastructure in the area, as well as flooding along Belmont Creek. The map here illustrates the proposed study area boundary. And as a note, the study area will not include the single-family neighborhood. We anticipate starting the specific plan process during the summer of this year. Next slide. With the current level of developer interest and growth within this area, the city is on the trajectory to exceed the citywide general plan threshold for commercial office and industrial uses as analyzed and adopted in San Carlos's 2030 General Plan and General Plan EIR. If the city wishes to build any additional commercial office for industrial uses, we will need to amend the general plan and general plan EIR. Next slide. This moratorium would allow time to prepare the specific plan, explore housing as a new use, especially in consideration of future cycles of RENA housing allocation, understand the potential presence of hazardous substances and impact, and their impact on future uses, create a plan to address flooding from Belmont Creek, prepare the general plan in EIR amendments, and also ensure that any proposed development aligns with the council and community's vision as defined during the specific planning process. Next slide. So the map on this slide illustrates the proposed boundary for the moratorium. As you can see, there is a slightly different boundary for the proposed moratorium than for the specific plan study area. In specific, we have removed the PAMP site from the moratorium boundary because PAMP already has an approved development agreement and a 10-year plan development plan. Similar to the specific plan study area, the proposed moratorium boundary also excludes the adjacent single-family neighborhood. Next slide. The moratorium would apply to the submission, consideration, or approval of applications as listed in the staff report and also on this slide. Next slide. The moratorium would not apply to applications similarly listed here and in the staff report. As noted, development applications that have been deemed complete will be exempt from the moratorium. So the only complete application submitted to date is for 642 Quarry Road for approximately 4,000 square feet of research and development space. Next slide. If the council approves the interim, interim ordinance this evening, the moratorium would go into effect immediately. The interim, interim ordinance would be effective for an initial 45-day period. And the council may extend the ordinance for an additional 12 months and 15 days, which would be a total of two years. Next slide. City staff has reached out to the Harbor Industrial Association leadership to share information about tonight's public hearing. We have also sent letters to all property and business owners within the proposed moratorium boundary. And we have placed a notice in the Examiner newspaper and have also created a city webpage to share information about tonight's hearing. Next slide, thank you. Staff's recommendation is that the city council adopt this interim ordinance. This completes my presentation and staff is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Megan. Great presentation. Uh, any questions from council this evening for staff? Thanks, Mayor Rack. You're muted.
So just so I understand, we're gonna do the questions and then later on we'll do any disclosures. Is that right?
I, I suppose we could just do disclosures now and get it out of the way.
I just, I'm, I'm fine either way, Madam Mayor.
Let's just do it now. That's, that's great. Let's do it now.
Okay.
I don't want to forget.
I, I'll, then I'll wait and let Laura go first and she had her hand up first on the disclosures.
Okay. Councilmember Palmer Lohan.
All right, thank you. Um, FPPC Advice Letter Number 820, uh, 111 allows me to participate in tonight's discussion. Um, my consultancy practice has never done any business with the city or the businesses that have applications before the city. Um, in past, I've toured the Alexandria real estate property, um, south of, uh, Holly Street, uh, as well as the NBC, um, building on Britain. I have taken meetings with, uh, Premier Princeton, Presidio Bay, Minkoff Group, the rep for Black Mountain Properties in Sabrato. My decisions this evening will not be influenced by those discussions. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, would you like to follow?
Uh, sure. Um, the only, um, meeting I've taken that for the area that's under consideration is the Minkoff Group, um, and that, uh, will not affect my decision in any way. I'm assuming letters that we've received and things of the whole council would not, I mean, don't need to be disclosed separately. Is that accurate, Greg?
That's right. It's just the individual contacts.
Okay, so I, I've only met with the Minkoff Group, um, and it will not influence my decision today.
Thank you. Councilmember Collins and then Councilmember Dugan.
Uh, I would, uh, I would probably say the same thing as Laura and Adam, although I'm not sure I've taken a meeting with the Minkoff Group. Even if I did, it really wouldn't affect me. I know, I'm pretty sure I talked to Presidio Partners. I know I've talked to Black Mountain in, in the past. So, uh, again, uh, same as Laura, not, not going to affect any decision that I make tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dugan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And, um, yeah, I too just want to disclose, I've had, I believe, two meetings with owners of properties within the affected area, the Minkoff Group and Presidio Bay. Those meetings will not affect, uh, my decision-making. Those meetings will not affect my decision-making process through this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And to round out disclosures, I too have held informational meetings only with Presidio Bay and the Minkoff Group. Again, they were informational in nature and will not affect my voting tonight. Okay, I think that's all for disclosures. Questions? Thanks, Mayor Rack.
Thank you, Madam. Two questions. First, thanks for the presentation. One is, can you just, and I don't know, for staff to just describe sort of, you know, we were looking at potentially a two-year moratorium, and just want to understand the thought process around how we got to that number around that. Just sort of curious to understand that.
I think I may ask Michael or Greg to step in, as I think there's some legal parameters for the timeframe.
I think I will start, and Mr. Biddle can chime in. Would I say need some clarification? Yeah, we looked at this comprehensively as a pretty large and potentially complex effort to look at the impacts of the area and the fact that a general plan amendment and a specific plan amendment and some environmental review may be required. We felt that the best path would be the interim ordinance path, which allows us to go to the full two years after the initial 45 days, and then a 22-month, 15-days would be the time period that we'd be looking at. And it just seemed the most appropriate given this type of project and the staff work and consideration the council can have.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it. The second question I had, and I think, I don't know if this was managed, handled by the, you know, sort of the subcommittee or how we came to this, you know, we did receive a letter from PG&E asking about they're doing some improvements on their site. And I just want to understand the thought process around not exempting PG&E for, I think it's for maybe replacing some of the the existing customer service center, looking at some solar panels and things. And so I just, can I, I don't know if it's, who might be the most appropriate to just understand why we didn't look at something that's not changing hands, not changing sort of the type of business that's there on that property.
Al, may I ask for your support and response to Vice Mayor's question?
Certainly. Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, I don't believe that PG&E has a complete application. And so that is one of the thresholds that we use to make the determination that that projects that do have a complete application would then be exempt from the moratorium. And I can go into more detail about what, you know, why is a complete application important, if you like. But that's really the threshold that we used here.
Okay, and just so I'm clear, if they were to, that's helpful to understand how, if they were just to say, we want to put, I'm just saying this, or somebody else could say like, if I want to just add solar panels to my project, you know, not do any changes to the building, just add solar panels, would something like that be affected by the moratorium? And I just know it's something we are encouraging through the Climate Action Plan. So if someone said, hey, I just want to put solar panels on my building, what would be the response from the community, from the city on that?
You know, that's a good one. That's one of those, that's more difficult for me to answer. And I'm going to go ahead and refer that question, if you don't mind, to our Special Legal Counsel.
Sure.
Mike, if you'd like to handle that.
Yeah, I think, good evening, Mayor and Council. Vice Mayor, I think a technical reading of the language that's in the ordinance that outlines the exceptions that I don't think that that type of permit application would fall within an exception. So my reading of the ordinance says drafted, it would prohibit issuance of building permits for that type of adding solar panels, if that's the question.
Okay. I guess that's helpful. I guess I'll go back to, we get to comments around that one, but that's helpful. Thank you for the clarification. That's all the questions I had, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Dugan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And yeah, I share Vice Mayor Rack's concerns about the bluntness of this moratorium. And I'm just curious, is there any way, you know, I think what we would want to accomplish here is to make sure, you know, wholesale changes aren't being made to the use of property while we're undergoing this plan. And I saw one exception for tenant improvement. So I guess a specific question, we don't just mean tenants of properties. I mean, a simple, you know, an owner making a simple change in their property, like a new bathroom or solar panels. Is that what's being addressed with that exception? I mean, you just said you didn't think solar panels would be accepted, but what is the tenant improvement exception cover then?
It really is geared towards a user or tenant of a building wanting to do improvements to their space. But if an owner wanted to start making modifications to their building, which is a broader application, the language in the ordinance presently doesn't capture that.
I see. So is it, I don't understand, you know, why would it be meaningful to allow tenants to do something and not allow owners to do the very same thing? I guess I'm not following that distinction.
Well, I would imagine for a tenant, it's, you know, it's more of a limited duration and a limited scope in terms of the area that they're modifying. They're already utilizing it, the space for whatever purposes that they use their space for. The concern about a property owner making broader changes to their building would create the potential that the building, there's greater investment into the building, and that facility, that building may be put to a use that could potentially be a use that is in contrast to what the council may decide they would like to see occur in the area. And so therefore, they've invested money into revisions that are contrary to what the council would like to see.
Yeah, I got it. I mean, it sounds like we're trying to draw a line of things that can be done that wouldn't be restricted by the moratorium. So I think we need a much further and deeper discussion around what that would be. I don't think it's of any matter if it's an owner or a tenant who does the things that we decide should be allowed. So I think we'll have plenty to talk about on this one. Thanks.
Thanks, Councilmember Dugan. Any other questions? I have a historical question, maybe for Megan or staff or Al. There's been some questions from the community about the moratorium, and how can we, you know, consider the moratorium for this area, and why didn't we consider a moratorium for the East Side Vision Plan area? Could you give a little kind of compare and contrast of the situation between the two large pieces of property?
Yes, I would be happy to, Madam Mayor. And I guess there's a fairly significant difference in these two areas, and one of the significant differentials is that, at the time of initiation of a vision plan, for instance, we had about 10 different development projects in various stages of review, and it represented about 2.8 million square feet of new development. And many of those projects had already made significant progress in terms of the, you know, the amount of investment and the time that they put in, maybe one, two years in some cases. And they had been working under the current zoning and general plan in that area. And so due to the commitment of resources that those property owners had made under the current zoning at that time, those clock projects were allowed to continue on with their technical studies and things like that. They were not allowed to continue with the community benefits, but they were allowed to go ahead and do some of the technical reports and the environmental reports. So the difference with this area is that it's in the very early stages of development evolution. It doesn't have the maturity that the East Side Vision Plan area had. And so we're just catching this right at the beginning of a transformation. And so as of today, what we know is we have one complete application, and that project has been in the process for maybe 18 months. And we can talk more about, you know, the progress that that particular project at Quarry in Old County has made. But we don't have any, and the PG&E project is in the conceptual stages too, but they don't have a complete application either. We know of the Minkoff Development and 200 Industrial, but they don't have a, they're just conceptual at this point. And we know about eight, seven, eight acres that has changed hands recently. So in terms of the development activity, it's at the very beginning stages of change. And that is why this area is much different in terms of the evolutionary stage that it's in.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful. Any other questions from council? Okay, seeing none, we can move to public comments, and then we will come back to discussion. The members of the public are invited now to raise your hands via Zoom or call in. Crystal, is anyone in the waiting room?
Yes, we have four hands up at the moment. First up is Clint Scholl. You'll be followed by Bill Chang.
And actually, Crystal, I'm going to just read what is on the screen. In the interest of full disclosure, please do note for those who are making a public comment, if you are a paid representative or advocate for any item, you'll be commenting on this evening. Okay, sorry, go ahead, Crystal.
Thank you. Clint, you may proceed.
Okay, thank you. My name is Clint Scholl, and I'm a senior officer for the GW Williams Company. My company is owner-operator of 20 light industrial buildings across 21 parcels within the territory delineated for this ordinance. While I don't have the exact square footage of all the affected properties within this area, judging just by the boundaries on the map provided with the ordinance notice, I'd estimate that my company owns at least 50% of the included territory, if not closer to 60 or 70%, making this a matter of extreme importance to us. Our company has owned the majority of this land for more than 50 years and began developing in the area all the way back in 1967. I bring these details to your attention not just to illustrate the crucial nature of this matter to us, but also to highlight our concern that we were not consulted or even notified about this until just one week ago. As the most greatly affected property holding stakeholder here, and as such a longstanding member of this community, my company would have greatly appreciated the opportunity to participate in discussions related to the moratorium and the future of this area. It's in this vein that we request that the council deny the approval of this moratorium, as it will have a major impact on both our future operations at these sites, as well as the value of the land and buildings we own. We just recently purchased an additional parcel within this area with future plans to redevelop this existing building, only to learn that we may have the right to do so taken from us, again, with only a week's notice. We do have an attorney in attendance who will be adding to these comments, but in closing, I'd just like to restate our desire for the council to vote down the moratorium tonight in order to at least give us an opportunity to be part of the discussion as to what the future of these sites look like. Since there are no pressing health or safety needs which necessitate this sort of a swift action, we believe that at least taking some additional time to consider the impact of the moratorium on a longstanding community member whose holdings comprise the majority of the affected area is more than warranted in this case. Thank you to the council members.
Thank you, Clint.
Next up, we have Bill Chang, followed by Eric Rama Krishnan. Bill, if you can unmute.
Yes, hi, thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. Thank you again for this opportunity to speak on behalf of PG&E. I guess I qualify as a paid representative or advocate for this item. I'm going to reference back, in the interest of time, I want to reference back to the letter that I believe all of you have received and have read. We've been working with city staff on a very collaborative basis for the better part of two years or more on this multi-phase project that, towards, at the end of this, at the end of all the projects, our plan is to have the San Carlos Service Center, the PG&E San Carlos Service Center at Leeds Silver or better. We have plans to install solar through the, covering the parking lot there. We have plans to reduce natural gas or eliminate natural gas use in that building. And we also have plans to reduce water use as well as stormwater drain off into either the storm drains or your sewer system. So we ask the council to consider an exemption for PG&E as a state-regulated utility, so we can continue on these environmental improvements. The improvements I mentioned are just part of the improvements. City staff is well aware of all of our varying plans, and we look forward to continue working with city staff and to help San Carlos meet its decarbonization goals. With me is a team here from PG&E to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Next up is Eric Rama Krishnan, followed by Carol.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Eric Rama Krishnan. I am an attorney with Berliner Cone LLP, which represents GW Williams Company. GW Williams owns a significant portion of the land affected by tonight's proposal. As you heard from Mr. Scholl, GW Williams has short-term plans for a small portion, for developing a small portion of its property, and long-term plans for the remainder of its property. If the moratorium is adopted, it could be extended for up to two years. A two-year moratorium will interfere with the company's investment-backed expectations in its land. Our concern is that the first contact the company has had with the city regarding the city's plans was to receive notice a week ago about tonight's hearing. This is unfortunate because GW Williams is such a major landowner in the affected area, and it should have been consulted. There is no pressing health or safety issue requiring a moratorium. We therefore urge your council to press pause on this issue and direct staff to consult with GW Williams to discuss any opportunities to accommodate the company's short and long-term plans for its property. If the city does move forward tonight without consultation, we will explore legal remedies to address the impacts on GW Williams's ability to develop its property. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Next up is Carol, followed by Cindy Levers. Carol, if you can go ahead and unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I apologize. I'm a bit technically challenged, so I'm talking on my wife's computer. My name is Chris Call. My wife and I own the properties, two parcels on the corner of Old County and Brigado Road. So we're hugely affected by this moratorium. We would like to formally object and enter our opposition to the proposed moratorium, especially with a two-year lead time on that. To include for your consideration, I'd also like to address the hazardous substance issue. We spent over 15 years dealing with the Water Resources Board in mitigation, drilling, monitoring over 22 wells in and around Quarry Road, I know on both sides of Brigado Road, at huge expense to us. We were able to prove that there is extreme hazardous materials running under that area. Fortunately for us, we were able to prove it was not coming from our property. But it is still an issue to be dealt with, and it has never been addressed. Considering the very brief notice as brought up by the Williams Company, I think it would be very wise to continue this discussion and vote down this moratorium at this time. Thank you for your service to our community and for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Clint.
Then we have Cindy Levers. You'll be followed by Daniel Minkoff.
Good evening, council members. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Cindy Ivers. I am the treasurer for San Montego Dog. Thank you. Um, yeah, my name is Cindy Ivers. I am the treasurer for Sam and Tio Dog Training Club. I am a tiny corner use case in this little area. Uh, we actually run from GW Williams. Um, we are considering getting a bigger property or moving to a slightly larger space, and we found out that this was a week ago, we found out this was happening and we may not be able to move because um we're a conditional use, because dog training is not one of the um normal permitted uses within the area. And so we wouldn't be able, and I I don't, I don't think that I'm the only um, I I think we're the only dog training club, but I don't, I think there's probably other odd clubs or or uses that are gonna be prohibited from like even changing to a different larger unit. And uh, and I don't see how uh our use impacts this whole thing at all, so I would hope you guys would reconsider doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Next up is Daniel Minkoff. You'll be followed by Sean Williams.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Dan Minkoff. The Minkoff Group is a local developer that works solely on the peninsula between San Carlos and Sunnyvale. As most of you know, we have been working with the city of San Carlos on a proposed R and D life science and light industrial project on land that we own at Two Hundred Industrial Road. We've been working hard uh with our design teams to create a project that takes inspiration from both the past and future of the neighborhood. Our proposed project will help transform this prominent and important site from its current condition devoid of trees uh into the next generation, many rich campus, which seamlessly integrates life science, nature, and cutting-edge light, light industrial spaces. A generous amount of activated public spaces with many new trees are carefully designed to welcome the community into the project and will be a desired amenity for any future residential development that might or might not occur in the area. While our proposed project will bring numerous community benefits to the city, a crucial project component is the preservation of thirty-six percent of our site's existing light industrial tenancy. The timely review and approval of this project will allow us to realize our phased building approach, which allows us to relocate these local businesses into a new, more efficient space, allowing them to remain in San Carlos and grow their businesses. We believe that this will have a significant benefit for San Carlos' economy and enhance our neighborhood. While we support the planning effort in the northeast area, we hope to remind council that managing timing uncertainties will dictate our ability to make our proposed small business preservation effort a reality. Time, economic uncertainty, rising interest rates, inflation, and other financial constraints can very easily compromise our vision to create a quality project that supports the future of the neighborhood while preserving its past. To that end, we hope San Carlos will continue to encourage innovative project applications and solutions like Two Hundred Industrial, studying projects as concurrently as possible, including creation of technical reports and conducting a timely sequel reviews.
Thank you, Daniel.
Next up is Sean Williams, and you'll be followed by Debbie Baldacci.
Thank you. Madam Mayor and council members, uh, I work for GW Williams as well. You uh you heard earlier from my coworker, legal counsel, and uh, I'm not gonna repeat all the reasons why we don't want this moratorium to proceed tonight. Uh, but I I do wanna reiterate it, and we we really were not given enough notice. We wanna be involved with this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Debbie Baldacci, you should be able to unmute, and you'll be followed by David Shick.
As a member of the community and resident of San Carlos, I support the small business owners and GW Williams who spoke tonight. The lack of notification to a major property owner seems very unfair. And the uh, one of the tenants who spoke about the need for a conditional use permit for their dog training business uh is an example of biotech and major rich corporations coming in to areas where they try to push out others who have property interest. A two-year moratorium would seem to really negatively impact GW Williams and other people in the area who may be having, who may have already had developments in the process. Number two, the most important thing is this is a very hazardous, waste-rich area. In some of those areas, current code does not even allow daycares to be there. In addition, it's an area that floods frequently because of Belmont Creek. So the idea of like putting residential buildings in that area in the light of so much environmental contamination and flood risk does not seem prudent. So I would recommend that the city council oppose this moratorium and have further discussions with the vested property owners who have provided such great services to San Carlos residents for over two years. One of those, for example, is Brigado Paving. They did recently did our asphalt. They're an excellent vendor. And uh, to see them be affected by this after they've just spent a lot of money uh upgrading their facilities seems very disappointing. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Debbie.
Uh, David Shick, you're up next, and you'll be followed by Jim Pilch.
Thank you. Uh, my name is David Shick, and um, some of you or some of the folks on the phone may have known my father Al Shick. He was integral in the uh annexation of the Harbor Industrial Area to San Carlos um many years ago, and I recall many meetings and sitting uh next to him at a variety of meetings. Um, and especially the um the the mediation that occurred between the city of San Carlos and the Harbor Industrial Group that um that seemed to my read to indicate that the city would continue to honor the use of the area. Um, I I wanted to reiterate the concerns raised by the Williams Group in that we I actually saw this letter barely a week and a half ago. Um, it was no time to respond um in a um and barely any time to to follow up with my my advisors. The um, it just really seems that there's a a real double jeopardy with this proposal in that the existing um, you know, existing development plans have to be put on hold and any changes to adapt to um to changes in the economy, to changes in the property use demand for the area are are frozen as well, uh allowing us no opportunity to adapt to the changing business climates within the area. Um, so I would ask that the council vote down this moratorium um at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Uh, next up is Jim Pilch. You'll be followed by Dave Cutler.
Good evening, Tall. Uh, my name is Jim Pilch. I'm a been a resident of the city of San Carlos for twenty-eight years. Uh, also own a building and a business near downtown. Uh, we've been there since nineteen ninety-seven. Um, I do have uh clients in this area, which is obviously how I found out about this because there was not a great deal of notice. What concerns me overall is when I look at and listen to, you know, you guys talk about the twenty-thirty development plans and, you know, we're already over those numbers, et cetera. And my understanding is that's for the entire city. My first question is, is if you're going to do anything, you should be doing it for the entire city. I, we're way past where our goals are and we need to go back and re-study them. Why are we not doing it for the entire city? I'm assuming there's a reason. I obviously don't know what that is. Uh, and again, if we need more housing, why is it with under the current developments that are going on? Why aren't we trying to get housing in some of those areas? Certainly, if you had housing um where the old Kelly Moore building was, uh easily accessible to downtown, don't need to drive, don't need to do much of anything. You can walk underneath a train and get there. Um, and I think someone stated, I think it was Al that stated earlier, there were two-point-eight million square feet of projects. When you had the twenty-thirty plan, then you put that in place, and that seems very close to pretty much what our limit is. So to me, this is something that you should have been thinking about long ago and to suddenly come in at the last second and say, sorry, this one area, no more development in that area. It doesn't seem fair to anybody. It doesn't seem like it's meeting the city's goals. So again, as everyone else has stated, uh, I can certainly hope that you guys decide to not uh pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Uh, Dave Cutler, you are up next, and you should be able to unmute.
Yes, thank you. Um, thank you, council, for allowing me the time to speak this evening. Uh, I appreciate your work and what you do for the community. Uh, my name is Dave Cutler, and I've worked with some local tenants, landlords, developers, and most importantly, um, local mom and pop business owners. All of these collectively being the business community in San Carlos. I'd I'd like to comment on the moratorium and express my serious concerns regarding this proposal. The city of San Carlos has promoted the East Side Innovation District as an example, um, as a vision for sustainable and necessary growth. It promotes green building, open spaces, and environmental stewardship, and is an excellent balance of thoughtful development and planning. Why would the council now put a full stop on the north side and penalize all the business businesses, small and large there? This is a unique time where we can experience real and transformative growth, but if the moratorium continues, not only will commercial developments suffer, but it will have drastic and far-reaching consequences beyond what's foreseen. Will not just discourage office and uh life science development, but also the very tenants uh that the city would like um to attract, the jobs, the surrounding retailers, daycares, doctors, small businesses, and especially especially local housing, which benefits from these developments. When you introduce uncertainty to the market, the jobs, growth, and stability that you are trying to attract will go somewhere else. There's a tremendous amount of public benefit that comes from new development and infrastructure improvement, and a moratorium on new projects is ultimately a moratorium on new open space, on green building, on protecting our climate. Please be reasonable and don't risk the credibility of San Carlos by changing the rules of the game during the game. Allow proposals to continue and thoughtfully provide feedback. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave. And looks like the last hand up at the moment is uh from a caller calling in with the phone number ending in seven-nine-two. You should be able to unmute by pressing star six. And if you want your name to be included in the minutes, please go ahead and state that.
Yeah, hi, this is Mark Blockenmeyer, the president of the Harbor Industrial Association. Um, our biggest concern uh in the area is the flooding and infrastructure problems that we've had for many, many years and discussed at the HIA meetings with San Carlos, the county, and Belmont. Um, we've proposed a two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar infrastructure program in the area, an improvement district to allow this type of building to happen and to uh accommodate the amount of building that is proposed or potentially proposed in our area. Um, Navartis did a significant study of flooding in the area and had spent significant amount of money uh preparing their facility because of the flooding. Uh, we've had the county put a major plan together to uh address the flooding. We've had significant problems back in October when we had a rainstorm where Quarry Road was uh literally a river. And our position at the HIA is we think that this is the most important thing to address in our area. Um, the moratorium may not be the best way to do that. Um, but we want some type of action to be taken to address these type of problems for the developers in the area and the existing tenants and property owners there. Thanks.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you. Um, and there are no further hands.
Okay. I want to take a moment to just thank all of the public callers this evening. Uh, we certainly appreciate your feedback. Um, seeing that there's no other public comment, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing at this time.
I'm moved to close the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. Crystal, could you please call the roll?
Okay, Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I'll open it up to council discussion. There are a few issues that were raised. Um, if anyone wants to dive into those, or I can, I can start. Um, Vice Mayor Rack, go ahead, lead us off.
Sorry, as long as I'm allowed to maybe come back on this. I have one question really for Greg, just to understand, and and maybe with Jeff or Al. So, you know, a lot of the comments, I I think there's a couple of issues, one around some of the potential for improvements around environment and, you know, we've got uh flooding zones and other things. So I wanna understand sort of how the impact of this moratorium would be around improvements around, you know, um, stormwater and things like that.
That's probably a an Al question or a public court's question.
Yeah. Thank you, uh, Greg and Councilmember Rack. Yes. So, so the intent of this specific plan is to, you know, find out what the issues are in the area. What are the negative impacts about what's happening over there? And that includes flooding issues, Belmont Creek issues, uh, environmental uh contamination. And that would be studied as part of the specific plan, and that's one of the reasons that specific plans take so long. Um, it it's a two-year process, and if we compare it to, for instance, the um the vision plan was only a nine-month process because we didn't do any technical studies for that. It was, it was a policy document. And so uh, all these things could be studied, and then the good thing about a specific plan is it acts very much like a general plan in a zoning ordinance put together, and that's basically what it is. It basically says, here's what you can do, here's your land uses, here's what everybody agrees upon in terms of the direction of this of this area from a technical standpoint uh and a development standpoint.
Okay, thank you, Al. That's helpful. And then I guess I have a a sort of a technical question maybe around this for Greg. So uh, tonight we're, we'll be considering um uh the moratorium for forty-five days, basically, we're looking at, right? And then we have the opportunity to extend at that point. If if after forty-five, let let's say this hypothetically, this passes tonight, and then at the forty-five-day mark, can we make modifications to that uh moratorium, or does it have to be the same exact moratorium? I'm just thinking, you know, part of what we've heard from some of the community is sort of not enough notice, and you know, I'm thinking for me, I'd be curious if, you know, Navartis, as an example, I don't know if they have solar on their building or not, but you know, they are probably not looking at doing huge modifications, but they may say, hey, we would love to put solar on our building or do some improvements that would help from an environmental standpoint. Are there things like that that we could, over the next forty-five days, kind of work on or get some more feedback from some of the residents, some of the business owners to understand? You know, are are there a couple minor adjustments that we might wanna consider?
I think I'll, I'll let Mr. Bill um lose. Um, this is for us, and I think that the earth is answering my question.
Uh, yes. So so yes, we could make some modifications after forty-five days if we, you know, staff was was meeting with or or had heard from some of the concerns and and we could make some adjustments at that point if if it was recommended or warranted or considered.
Yes, you could.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and um, I really appreciate uh hearing from everyone in the community and everyone uh who would be impacted uh by by this moratorium. Um, and I understand the seriousness of of, you know, such a blunt tool as as is being presented here this evening. Um, you know, I just wanna take that that step back to, you know, uh, because some of this, I think, a bit of a failure to communicate. You know, we have this area um and development is coming into this area over the next uh decade or two. And since as a city, we've annexed this area, um, no thorough planning has taken place. Um, the infrastructure is not adequate for the development that will likely occur. Um, and we even heard from the um, uh, Mark, the president of the HIA Association on the uh, the flooding and other infrastructure uh issues in the area. So as a city, we just, we need to do this plan, and that's why it's a high goal of the city now to do a specific plan. Um, and the idea of a moratorium, as I understand it, is simply to make sure a lot of major redevelopment doesn't happen um, un- until we have this plan in place. Um, so that that's what I would say I was expecting was a, you know, a restriction from major redevelopment. So that, that's what I would say I was expecting was a, you know, a restriction from major redevelopment projects moving forward. I'm not comfortable with a um, moratorium that would stop uh, tenants from conditional use applications, just trying to, you know, make use, normal commercial use of what's taking place there. So I, you know, I, I think where I'm at right now, I, I, I don't think we're in a position to approve this moratorium here this evening. I do think we need to put together a, with further input with all the affected parties, a thoughtful moratorium, one against wholesale redevelopment of property so that um, this specific plan will be handled in proper context and, and can be done uh, without, you know, a lot of major redevelopment happening. But I, I think we need to come up with a thoughtful moratorium that would allow the normal economic functioning of, of this area of our, of our city. And, and, and in my mind, you know, it's, it, instead of just a wholesale restrictions, it's more like, you know, the normal stuff can continue to happen. People can put up solar panels, uh, PG and E should be allowed to do the typical stuff an owner of a property would want to do. And uh, we just have to figure out, I think, how to define a moratorium so this, this area can continue to operate. But that um, you know, we do the proper planning before major redevelopment projects start, start to come, come underway. Uh, thank you.
Was there a question in there, John, that you wanted from staff or was that just some feedback?
Oh, yeah, no, I thought we were past the questioning.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that you weren't waiting for a response.
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you, John. I'll, I, I'll get um, Laura and Ronald, go to you in just one second. But this still boned John's comments, so I wanted to ask now. With regard to the conditional use permit, the exception, exception three is a change of use within a space of an existing building and any associated tenant improvement. Would that, is that an exception that would include um, the caller from the San Mateo Dog Club? That if she were to move, move buildings, um, would she, would she be under the exception?
Before Mike, uh, before you, you answer, what I'd like to do is if we could have Crystal bring up the slide that shows what's permitted and what's not permitted. I think that would be a good um, starting point for us.
Do you know what slide number that is?
If you just scroll back, it's in the middle there somewhere. Okay, right there. Down one. Uh, next slide, there we go. Okay, so it would apply to, you know, these things, a use permit. So um, for instance, if a, if the kennel wanted to move into a building and the current zoning said that um, you need a, a use permit from the planning commission to do that, that is not permitted according to the current moratorium. That would need to, that's a discretionary permit that they would have to get. What it does allow for, if we go to the next page, is just for if, if, if that same kennel moved across the area and moved into a building that it, where it was a permitted use, that would be permitted. They, they wouldn't need to go to the planning commission for a use permit as currently written. So that's the threshold in that particular instance.
Well.
And Mike, if you want to add to that?
Yeah, I would, actually, the, the, the language speaks to a change of use within a space of an existing building. So if they um, in any tenant improvements, so it's really about changing the use within a space. But if, if they were to go to a new building, you know, and that new building, that use was allowed, then that, that would be permitted.
So um, just to clarify, uh, Mike, what you're saying is because the zoning ordinance, and I, I just need clarification. You're saying that because the zoning ordinance allows that use with a use permit, then they could apply for a use permit in a new location
No.
under the current ordinance, under the current, current moratorium?
No, they could not.
Oh, they could not. So I was right in my interpretation. Very good.
Yeah, what I was focusing on is the change of use within a space of an existing building. And but there's a provision there that the new use is permitted as of right. So you can have, you can have an existing space and there can be a change of use. But that new use has to be permitted as of right. So um, you could not change the use of that space to something that is conditionally permitted.
And people could still do tenant improvements inside the building, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both. I will go to Councilmember Palmer Lohan and then Councilmember Collins.
Great, thank you. So I have some comments and then, and then a question. So um, I, I really appreciate everybody um, calling in tonight and sending in your letters and explaining your situation. It's very helpful to um, get some context around that. And um, I appreciate the concerns and the uncertainty that, that this may bring. I'm also hearing some pretty significant issues with respect to the area. So flooding, for example, with Belmont Creek. I have, I, I have heard too that that had had some impact on one of the businesses there in a fairly major way. Um, and I'm also hearing that there's toxins in the soil. And what I'm understanding from the staff report is that uh, what would come of this would be an EIR. And I'm assuming that that EIR would um, begin to articulate some of these challenges and also talk about the potential impacts. So Al, could you talk a little bit about that and um, what the potential benefit would be of doing a focused effort in this way as opposed to um, continuing to allow projects to move forward um, ad hoc, as it were?
Yeah, certainly. Um, well, um, here's some of the benefits. Is after a two-year period and, and the, the specific plan would be a big part of the specific plan process would be engaging the property owners and the broader community, the business owners, the whole community as to what the issues are, what needs to be done and what's appropriate in, in, you know, in general. And at the end of the process, the intent of a specific plan is to provide certainty to the marketplace and to the city and to the residents of the city. So it sets for, here's what you can do, here's how much you can do, here's how much development, what type of development. And that is all studied as part of the environmental impact report. So the benefit to the development community and the property owners, if, if you want to structure it this way is they wouldn't have to do an environmental impact report for their project if it's in conformance with the specific plan necessarily. They may have to do some uh, assessment or environmental assessment, but they wouldn't have to spend the hundreds of thousands of dollars in, you know, maybe a year to prepare an EIR if you conform with a specific plan. And finally, the intent is um, is to say that if larger projects like this move forward, it does change the dynamics of the area and uh, the, the change in larger development projects like was discussed may not match the vision that emerges from the in-depth discussion that you have as part of the specific plan.
Thank you. I yield my time. I may want to come back later. Thank you.
Fair enough. Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Al, I, I think I'm going to ask the question that I, I was hoping that John would ask. And that is, purpose of the moratorium, as I understand it, is really aimed at wholesale large development changes, property aggregations to build new um, large projects. Am, am I correct in that assumption?
Primarily, yes. I mean, the, the, that's the idea. However, the, I think the other underlying idea, and I'm open to uh, having Michael uh, you know, clarify this a little bit. But you know, any super significant investment in a, in a property, right? I mean, if you're gonna, you know, completely rebuild a building on the outside and put, you know, millions and millions of dollars in investment, then you know, you'll, you'll, you're likely to be locking in that land use maybe for decades. And so that's the other, I think, idea that there are certain things that are allowed to move forward, like the changes in businesses, tenant improvements and things like that. But if you're going to come in with a big application to change the whole building, then, or you know, some huge change, then that is what we're trying to um, hold off on for a while.
Right.
So, Michael, you can clarify if I got something wrong there.
No, you were spot on.
Okay.
Okay, so I, so the moratorium as written, you feel uh, accomplishes that, that purpose? That we're, we're not being overly restrictive in some of the improvements that uh, the business owners want to make or the tenants want to make. That, that really our overarching goal is to, is to allow us time to plan for what we want this area to look like in ten, fifteen, twenty years. And also, I guess, one of the things that I know my fellow council members have expressed interest in is the, is the introduction of, of additional housing in that area. And that under current zoning, that's not allowed. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
All right. I'm just trying to get the big picture here. And, and hopefully we don't lose focus of what our long-term goal is. So that's, that's why um, I asked that. And y- your point about the EIR process seems to make sense that if, if we're gonna, we're gonna go through that process so that the, the future development does not. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, that, that would be the intent. A good example is the downtown plan for Redwood City, where they structured it in such a way as to uh, say, okay, if you do X, Y, and Z, you don't have to do the EIR. You can come in and, and in fact, the just, the review process is also streamlined. So you can, you can also consider building that into your specific plan.
Right. Thank you. And there were lots of comments about flood control and toxic cleanup and, and that sort of thing. I don't imagine that we're really ignoring that in this process. That's going to get done, correct? And would it be done on a, on a more comprehensive scale? By doing this moratorium and doing more comprehensive planning? Or would we, if we don't do it, would we then just be relying on project by project doing their particular uh, cleanup or, or if their, if their property touches the Belmont line, that they'd have to do the, the um, you know, the creek improvements to prevent flood control? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, so I think it would be a little of both. I mean, you, you, you want to look at, for instance, with Belmont Creek, we know that, you know, we, we only have a portion, a small portion of Belmont Creek as a whole. It goes through a couple of cities and so it's multi-jurisdictional issue. And, and there's other entities involved. So we have to be cognizant that we have to talk to those other entities and, and look at some of the plans that have been done so far in Belmont and Redwood Shores uh, and talk to some of the other agencies involved. So that should be part of the specific plan. But also, um, if you do own, you know, uh, a three hundred feet of the creek on your side, what should your fair share of improvement be? And this, the intent of the plan would be to put a technical, some um, you know, reports and studies and analysis to determine what's fair for each property owner or developer along the creek to contribute to make those improve.
Okay, all right. Uh, thank you, Al. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
From Councilmember Dugan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And yeah, I just have a question for Al. You know, it, it, my, my perception has been that, you know, as presented, this moratorium is just very broad and, and would hit a lot of things that I think we would be okay allowing. If we actually looked at them at a case, by case basis, solar panels, uh, minor changes. Uh, I think it would be fine with, if an owner wanted to do interior remodels, not just a tenant, for example. Is there any downside if, you know, we kind of take the time to cycle this again and find, you know, and allow staff the opportunity to more narrowly tailor this so that it really is going after those, those major applications as, as you suggested? Is there any downside to take that time and perhaps, you know, a bit more outreach and engagement with the affected parties?
I don't think there's necessarily a downside. I tend to um, lean in the direction of collaboration and communication. So uh, I, you know, more is better for me. This is, you know, we, we do know that it's about two years to prepare one of these plans. That's, that's the big thing that we know. We know that you, as a council, have an objective, a strategic objective that wants to do this plan. And so really, it just delays the start of the planning process. So we, we could take the, maybe you do forty-five days, uh, give us the forty-five days to talk about it and then, and meet with people and hear more input and then make adjustments uh, when, when it comes back for an extension. So that would be an option.
Okay, uh, thank you. I appreciate that. I think we uh, we should consider that.
I would support considering that. But I would, I would support moving forward tonight. I, I wouldn't want to put off the specific plan much longer. But I would be open to making adjustments after forty-five days. Uh, Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yeah, I, I, I felt that Vice Mayor Rack had a good suggestion earlier in the conversation, or at least the question. I don't know that you actually suggested it, but you, you questioned about that possibility um, of moving forward with the forty-five days. And then it sounded like within that forty-five days, gathering some additional information to then further refine that ordinance, um, once, uh, you know, should we choose to extend it later? Is that, was that your thinking, Vice Mayor?
Yes, we were still in the Q and A section. So yes, but that was the, I, I would, I was trying to get at that, you know, Councilmember Palmer Lohan, just to see if that was an option. And I, I do think that's a reasonable approach so that we're not pushing things back further. But we're willing to make some adjustments um, after hearing a little further from the, from the affected community.
Yeah, I, I, I personally feel ill-equipped and, and not well-informed enough to do any kind of carve-outs this evening. So if that's kind of where this is headed, I would prefer the opportunity to get more input from the community and, and then proceed with our intention of the forty-five day uh, moratorium and then revisiting it later.
Um, can I just, Madam Mayor, can I just interject something and maybe help with the discussion? Because I, I noticed in the urgency ordinance, um, there is a report that we um, make to the council ten days before um, the forty-five days. So that would give us the time to provide information to the council and the community about what our efforts were and, and see if there are any um, changes in that, really the policy envelope of what kind of exceptions you might be interested in entertaining that are different than what's before you tonight.
Thanks, Greg. That's, that's helpful information. Any other issues that council would like to bring forward? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion. Uh, Councilmember Collins?
I apologize, Madam Mayor. I um, was wondering whether or not you were wanting either questions or comments right now or if you want to wait until there's a motion and then have more discussion or just more comments. And I'm happy to hold whatever comments I have until there's a motion made.
Uh, we can, we can proceed with comments. I'm, I'm sure we all have comments. So we can, we can do comments and then move to a motion. Thanks.
Okay, well, then I, allow me then to just share a few thoughts. You know, it, it's kind of interesting, um, for years, last three or four or five years, all, whenever the San Carlos does a community survey, one of the things that the public mentions as a very high concern is this, is that we are, you know, building too fast. They want it, people want to control growth. They want to control development. Well, this is an opportunity to kind of push the pause button and kind of slow it down. And so, but I, I, I do understand the comments tonight. Of course, they're from people who have property over there and they have legitimate concerns. But the way I see it, this is really all about planning for the future. We're not planning for next year, two years from now. We're planning for ten years from now, fifteen, twenty years from now. twenty years from now. Um, and anybody that knows me knows I've been a proponent of commercial development for on the east side for many years, both as a member of EDAC and, and now on the council. You know, when I came to the council in twenty-eleven, uh, we were still much in the uh, very much in the throes of, of a recession and the financial situation was much different than it is today. So supporting a moratorium is, you know, just not something that I'm ordinarily uh, have supported in the past. But when you look at it overall, I mean, our, our fiscal house is in order and our prospects for diversified and sustainable revenue stream of the city are just much better. So to me, it, this is really the best time to do some long-term planning and bring some balance to our community and focus on creating more value uh, to the quality of life. And that's one thing we haven't even talked about is really the quality of life. And this is an opportunity for us to look at, uh, you know, the lack of affordable housing, which this council has discussed at length. Um, yes, we have enough capacity right now in the existing areas to accommodate all arena numbers that um, the state has asked us to put together. But many cities are looking to go beyond that. And at some point, we're going to need um, additional space. So I think that's something obviously that we really want to study. And one of the reasons I asked the questions about, you know, flood control and cleaning up of toxins, because I don't think that this particular moratorium or, or even, you know, the, uh, a specific plan uh, dismisses or ignores them. I think it actually addresses it. And, but the last thing it does to me is, it really it addresses our lack of a true um, usable public amenity. And, you know, what I mean by that is that um, you know, we should not always be about revenue. Uh, you know, maximizing revenue. That's not really what we ought to be about. Um, we need to provide amenities that our community needs and deserves, um, like, you know, modern community center with a pool and a theater and childcare and other facilities that, um, that, you know, the public's going to, uh, going to enjoy. I think that ought to be our priority moving forward. So I believe this is our opportunity and maybe our last opportunity. You know, we really need to consider uh, this in a, really in a holistic way. Um, and I, I really believe that it's, it's something that we really ought to move forward. So thank you for indulging, my team.
Thank you, Ron. Any other comments from councilmembers? Vice Mayor Rock.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And uh, Ron, thanks for the thoughtful comments. Um, I, I I, I think that, you know, it's important, we, we've decided to embark on this northeast specific plan and I think it's important. Uh, you know, the plan for the future, think about the many things that we talked about in terms of environmental impact, flooding, housing, and, and more commercial development that's coming. Um, so I, I think it's a good thing that we're moving forward, uh, that with this moratorium, I do think there are some tweaks and some changes that we should consider um, after staff can meet with uh, some of the business owners and, and some of the tenants to understand if there, you know, if there are some, some tweaks that we should make. And so I, while I'm, I'm planning to support this tonight, I do hope that we can uh, look at things at the forty-five days and see if there are some, some minor changes that would that we can make or, or, or take a consideration of.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Palmer Lohan.
Thank you. Um, I, I also appreciate Councilmember Collins's remarks about kind of the vision for, for what this could be. But I think the other component to it that I'm also interested in is just the fact that some of these issues that we're talking about flooding and toxins in the soils are, are not easy. Uh, they're, they're, those are big lifts. And um, I, I think it's going to require focus um, and a concerted effort uh, to really make sure that we're thinking through um, how uh, those issues are going to be addressed. Uh, because as was pointed out by one of the um, uh, people who called in, it's not insignificant in terms of the cost. Um, and um, it also may have implications, um, as we've discussed on the east side, um, Innovation District, how projects are constructed, um, so as to address the impacts of climate change. Um, so um, I recognize and again appreciate the uncertainty, um, and the timing is never good for this type of thing. Um, but I think what it will do is allow us the opportunity to come together in conversation across stakeholder groups and, and really think through uh, what this uh, part of the San Carlos community looks like and how it can um, be set up in such a way to allow commercial uh, entities to thrive, um, and also bring a much-needed benefit uh, to the broader community. And um, hopefully, uh, more trees, as we talked about earlier this evening. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Palmer Lohan. Uh, Councilmember Dugan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And um, um, yeah, I, I agree with, with everything. Um, uh, Ron said and Laura said, uh, you know, we have a big vision here and we're pursuing it as a big goal. Um, I, and, and I, you know, I'm, I'm certainly a champion of, of our specific plan here. And I, I recognize a moratorium against major redevelopment is, is going to be a necessary component for us to, to get this right. Um, but given how big this is, I just think we got to get this off on the right step. And, and I just, um, I, I honestly, I, I don't think there's much downside for us to not do the moratorium as it's presented here and allow us to come back with something that is much more narrowly tailored and not as impactful on uh, you know, folks that I don't think we want to impact. I don't think we want to impact uh, these simple uh, changes. And I understand there's an opportunity to make revisions at forty-five days, but you know, this is a wholesale moratorium as written right now against nearly any changes of any kind of remodel to a bathroom. I mean, you know, just, uh, it, it's a very blunt thing we're proposing here. And I, I just think it's, it's uh, not the right first step. Uh, I think we should move forward with a properly tailored moratorium. Um, and I think it's worth taking the time to do that. And I, I, I just think that this one is so mu- broader than I think we intend. I think it's um, uh, which is just unwise to move forward with it in the hopes that we might make adjustments after forty-five days. So I, I really would just um, encourage us to take that time and, and, and allow us to get this thing right. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Um, I'll go ahead and share my thoughts. Um, I, I appreciate everyone's discussion. I thought it was very thoughtful, um, what everyone has shared. And we've certainly been taking to heart what the public comments have been tonight. Um, I am going to support moving forward with the moratorium. Um, I think timing is everything. And we have a brief moment here to see clearly the increased pressure for new development in this area coming right at us. And we're early enough to be able to take action with the moratorium. Um, so I do think it's time for a timeout um, on major development in the northeast area. This moratorium gives us the time needed to take a holistic approach to this area and craft a specific plan with our community to include the major infrastructure upgrades that we heard about tonight, environmental cleanup, which is a serious and pressing priority. And we have an opportunity, because we are launching this plan so early, um, to consider new la- new land uses like housing and recreational spaces for the community that Ron discussed. Um, we've already allocated one and a half million dollars to specific plan. We called this out in January as one of our goals. We've been talking about this for quite some time. Um, and it's my preference that we make sure it's as comprehensive as possible. There will be lots of opportunities for public comment throughout this process. And I do hope that everyone who participated tonight uh, continues to stay involved. Um, I do support staff's recommendation to make an exception to moratorium for projects that have been deemed complete. Um, I think that's an easy line to draw. Um, and I, I also support looking at some minor exceptions. But I do think that that's going to take some time from staff to really dig into. Um, I think they're going to be tricky to define because um, these are investments that people are making in their buildings. And um, that, that, that will impact kind of the long-term future of their, of their properties. So I would support moving ahead with this. This is something that we've discussed for quite a while. Um, and that's what I'm going to support tonight. Is there any further discussion? Okay, uh, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I will move to adopt ordinance number
Fifteen eighty-one.
Fifteen eighty-one, an interim ordinance of the City Council of City of San Carlos, pursuant to the government code section six-five-eight-five-eight B, establishing a moratorium on the submission, consideration, and approval of applications for one, lot line adjustments and the subdivision of land within the northeast area in accordance with the City of San Carlos subdivision regulations and the subdivision map act. Two, design review, use permit, temporary use permit, plan development, zoning development, waiver variance, general plan amendment, development agreement, or any other discretionary approval item from the City of San Carlos necessary for the development of a site within the northeast area in accordance with the San Carlos zoning ordinance. Or three, a building permit required for construction and or alterations on property within the northeast area in accordance with the San Carlos municipal code, subject to certain enumerated exceptions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Crystal, could you please call the roll? Uh, Councilmember Dugan, I see your hand.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And uh, before the vote, I just want to say, uh, you know, I'm a champion of, of, of this specific plan for sure. And I do support a moratorium against a major redevelopment. Uh, will we have the opportunity to make this plan? Um, I, th- this moratorium is, is um, just um, very blunt and goes beyond what I, I expected here. Um, so I'm going to abstain uh, from this vote. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, um, Crystal, could you please call the roll?
Okay. Vice Mayor Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Abstain.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell.
Yeah. Thank you, Crystal. Okay, we are now going to move on to agenda setting, item ten. Any of my colleagues wish to um, discuss an agenda setting item? Councilmember Palmer Lohan.
Um, I just wanted to respond to uh, the, your mayor, the mayor, your, you, the mayor's, your comments earlier uh, this evening with respect to the investigation and just wondering when uh, that might be brought back to council for discussion? Is there an expected timeline?
Greg, would you like to answer that?
Yes, um, thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Palmer Lohan. Well, there's some information that I'm waiting to, to receive. Uh, and I would expect sometime possibly, the, it's possible that we might have it um, a report back at the first meeting in May, but I think it's more likely to be the second meeting.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Rock.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have an agenda-setting item ahead. If it's appropriate, a question, because I believe the next meeting, we're planning to be back in the chambers. Is there um, a plan to uh, communicate that to the public? What, what's sort of the plan from staff around that?
Uh, yeah, uh, we will be back in person. Um, our meeting will be in a hybrid format, so we will still be on Zoom. And folks from the public can participate remotely. We'll put that information out to the public um, through our e-notify system, our, you know, agenda system and through our social media channels. Um, to let folks know that they'll have um, an additional option to participate in our meetings, which will be in person uh, starting May ninth.
Thank you, Beth. Uh, any other discussion points? Okay, I'm looking forward to seeing everyone in person in two weeks.
Me too.
All right, with that, we're adjourned. Thanks very much. Take care.